And so with that, it is seven o'clock. And this meeting is called to order. I'm Mayor Beverly H. Burks, and this is the City Council Work Session for Tuesday, February twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four. I will do roll call at this time. Vice Mayor Johnson. Councilman Yasu. Councilman Carol.
Present.
Councilwoman Bell.
Present.
Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
And Councilman Perkins.
Present.
And I'd recognize our interim City Manager Sadler Jones. There are there any changes or adjustments to this agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is accepted by common consent. We will now move into public comments. Public comments. Any member of the public may address questions or comments to the City Council referencing only agenda items after the mayor and council have had an opportunity to discuss the agenda item. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments. And so at this time, council, I would like to also make sure that we agree to do each item no more than twenty minutes. Is that, do I have concurrence with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay, outstanding, thank you. So with that, we will move to presentations, administrative business, and that's to discuss the proclamation designating March as Women's History Month. I'll just turn this over to Vice Mayor Johnson because I put this on the agenda as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, we would start with presentations, and that's for A, to discuss the proclamation designating March as Women's History Month. I'll turn it over to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and so just for clarity, I put this item on the agenda, and since I'm the presiding officer, I relinquish the presiding officer position so that I will be able to talk about it. And it's very simple, it's a matter of recognizing Women's History Month, and this is something that we've done in the past, and I just wanted to bring this back on, especially since the theme is women who advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion. And so that's the proclamation, and I would like the council to have concurrence to approve it.
Are there any questions related to this item?
I think you can go on the consent agenda.
What did he say? Consent agenda. Oh. Everybody wants to put this on the consent agenda? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And so we will now move into, there's no old business, we will move into new business, which is to discuss a resolution authorizing an agreement with Pennant Consulting LLC for professional services for an interim city clerk position in the amount of five thousand monthly. I will turn this over to our interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Mayor, as you mentioned, this item is to approve an agreement with Melissa Piniate, with Piniate Consulting LLC. Ms. Piniate was a previous city clerk with the city of Lilleburn for over a decade, and she started her own business in two thousand and twenty-two. She comes to us highly recommended by the Georgia Municipal Association, and she will serve as the interim while our current city clerk is on maternity leave, starting March the eleventh through the end of June of this year. And Mayor, this item is recommended for approval. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take those at this time. Ms. Piniate is viewing with us via Zoom, so she wasn't physically able to be here tonight, but she is available to be here on next Tuesday.
Okay. Counsel, did you have any questions about this item? No questions? Okay, great. Is this something that we can put on consent?
No, we have questions.
Oh, we, okay, yes.
Well, I just wanted, Ms. Melissa, is she's on the Zoom now?
She's on the, you said she's on the Zoom.
I don't think you can see her on the screen now, but she is on the Zoom.
That's Tamika.
No, they have to tell.
They have to change the view.
You have to change it up.
It's their twin.
I'm right here.
Oh, hey, Melissa, how are you?
Good, how are you? I'm sorry I couldn't join you guys.
It's okay, I just wanted you to kind of give us an overview of some of your experience. I see that you worked in Lilleburn for a little while, for over a decade.
Yes, ma'am. I worked in the city of Lilleburn as a city clerk for ten years. I have experience in elections, records management, of course, meeting management, and everything else that falls under the city clerk, you know, other tasks as assigned.
And do you mind if I ask another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, and I know that you were there as a city clerk for over a decade, and then you started your consulting firm. In your consulting capacity, how many clients have you had, and what are those cities?
Oh, sure, we've had, as far as cities, we've had about four. I got the privilege to work with Karen at the city of Lawrenceville, as well working back again with the city of Lilleburn, conducting their last election. And then we worked with the city of Auburn with their grant, research and writing. Right now, and then you guys, you know, we get the privilege to work with the city of Clarkston.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Perkins?
I did have, and this might be more of a question for Tammy, a question on the scope of services, so one B and C, just where it allows for subcontracting within the contract. Do we have an idea of what kind of services would be contracted out? I guess depending on the nature of those, I'm a little concerned with that line.
Based upon my conversations with Melissa, she will be the primary person working, but that may be a specific question for her if she plans to delegate any of these responsibilities to her team members, but she is a certified clerk here in the state of Georgia, so to do these duties, from my understanding, she is the only one on her team with those skills. But Melissa, I don't want to put any words in your mouth, can you, is there anybody that's going to be assisting you?
No, ma'am, in this capacity, it'll just be me. The rest of the team works on the nonprofit side and with the small businesses that we work with.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bell?
I have one follow-up question, this is for you, Tammy. I see on the resolution here that if we move forward with Melissa's consultant firm, that Tamika leaves on the eleventh of March, and so the consultant firm starts on the eleventh. What's the time period before that to make sure that whoever we have in this capacity has the appropriate training and access to the appropriate tools that we use internally so that they're set up for success with their role?
So I have already scheduled a meeting pending this conversation tonight with Ms. Mitchell and with Ms. Piniate on this coming Friday so we can go over a transition plan in regards to things that need to be done in preparation for Ms. Tamika Mitchell going out on maternity leave.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And counsel, any other questions?
I have a question. Is this a forty-hour-a-week position? Or is it?
No, it's a consulting position, most likely between ten to fifteen hours per week. However, in any consulting position, like what I'm in currently right now, you typically work more than, you know, those hours, but I'm confident that she will handle whatever responsibilities that she needs to handle in whatever dedicated time.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Hearing none, is this an item that we can put on consent, or would you like further discussion? Okay, consent, all right, this item will go on to consent. The next item, and just so you know, when we say consent agenda, if it's something that the council agrees and there's no more deliberation, then we will agree for, approve a section of items at one time. So the next thing is item B, which is to discuss the city services agreement with Amani Women's Center to provide a workforce development program beginning in two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, funded through the ARPA grant in the amount of eighty-two thousand eight hundred. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item, along with the next four items, are for services agreement with specific nonprofit organizations that the city approved in its budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four to receive funding through the American Rescue Plan Act or through the general fund, specifically the community action budget for fiscal year twenty-four. And so this particular item is for the Amani Women's Center, as you mentioned, to provide workforce development training to Clarkston residents. We began in, it was done in two thousand and twenty-two, the program went through two thousand and twenty-three, and so we are requesting that this item be approved because we never signed the MOU with this organization on last year. So we are just trying to make sure that we are formalizing these processes to ensure that these organizations are using the money for the purposes in which they were allocated.
Okay. And are there any questions from the council on this item? Yes, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, thank you. My understanding is that the, a portion, a large portion of the original grant agreement of eighty-two thousand eight hundred has been expended and will be reimbursed, will be, the invoice will be paid by the city, fifty-two thousand dollars. And so there's about thirty thousand dollars left in this grant for services in two thousand and twenty-four this year. So I think it would be helpful to have a breakdown of how that money would be used this year. We have excellent details about how the fifty-two thousand dollars was used, but I think it'd be helpful to me, perhaps others, to see what the thirty thousand will be used for this year.
So if I'm not mistaken, City Manager Jones, this is a continuation of the program with the things that have been outlined?
Yes.
And it's just a matter of them continuing to do those activities?
Yes.
With a formal signed agreement?
Absolutely.
Does that help? Or would you like more information, Councilwoman Hood?
Well, because, because they expended the vast majority of the grant, it doesn't seem to me that they would be able, if this is money for the whole of two thousand and twenty-four, it doesn't seem to me that they would be able to provide those level of services with the thirty thousand remaining. So that's just my question. If it were half and half, then you could say, yes, what they did in the first year is what they would do in the second year, but there's, there's a big difference in the remaining funding.
Okay. I think Vice Mayor Johnson has something.
Yes, when they brought this to us, this is not a program that is structured around a template. This is individuals, if you look at the invoice, these individuals are taking classes, and they had a waiting period at that time. So basically, these people successfully went through the program, and the next round of people will go through the remainder of the program. It's the way they broke it down when they submitted the paperwork.
Right, I understand that, but they, but they only have thirty thousand, so is that going to change the number of people they can serve? Is it going to change the scope of services that they can provide? That's, that's all I'm inquiring about.
Okay, so if, and.
Is any of them here?
So is Doris on, or?
Is Doris or Reggie here?
Chief, check it, check that out, but again.
It doesn't take away from the program.
It's, it's just a matter of.
I think when they did it, they gave us a number of like fifty people, and at this point, thirty-five may have been serviced, so that gives the other.
Okay, so what we can do, counsel, go ahead, Councilwoman Bell.
So my understanding is they did us a service. We didn't have an official contract with them, and so what they did is proceeded to provide services to their target population with the hopes that we would reimburse them, because we never signed anything officially. So Councilmember Hood, if you don't mind, I recommend that you think about this as a one-year program, right? If it started in March, it may end this March, right? And so they provided services up to the fifty-two thousand, and so they just have that much left. My understanding, based off what was written in the addendums that they provided, is that this wouldn't extend all the way until the end of two thousand and twenty-four. However, I could be wrong, and so if Doris is online or outside, you don't see her, does she? No. Then we can get that information, but I don't think she could go down and give you like the services that will be rendered and like a timeline. That's my recommendation, based off of what was provided. I don't know.
Okay. So.
You know, it's, I read through the material that they presented, and it appears they do excellent work, and they have a lot of reporting, et cetera. My understanding was that that reporting was for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-three. And the cost was fifty-two thousand dollars.
Right.
Now, are there going to be any changes in what they do? I don't see without supplemental funding from somebody else, which maybe they have, they can't do that same level of service to the same number of people in two thousand and twenty-four because they only have thirty thousand dollars. And my question is, well, because this is a program, and it's important, and it's well-run, how are they going to, what level of service will they be delivering with the thirty thousand versus the fifty-two? So I'm no way asking for accountability because I don't think they're doing a good job or anything else like that. It just seems to me that of the original grant, they have reported on what they did with fifty-two thousand dollars of it, and so I think it would be appropriate to ask, well, what are your goals with the thirty thousand?
So counsel, Councilwoman Hood, this is what we'll do. We can ask if there's any change or decrease with the number of people that they plan to service with that, and so prior to the meeting, we'll make sure that we have that answer for you. Would that help?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, hearing, any other questions on this matter, and I'm sorry, I need to make sure, do we have anyone signed up for this particular item? Ms. Mitchell? Did we have anyone signed up for this particular item online? Oh, she can't hear me. She says she can't hear. Okay. No one signed, okay, so we don't have anyone signed, and you may have to text her just to double-check. So with that, if there are any other questions from the council, is this item, can, well, we'll wait, do we want this for consent agenda?
Yes, consent.
Right? I need to.
Yes.
Ms. Hood, consent or no?
Consent or no?
I would say consent unless there's some rule that there are changes.
We appreciate you.
Consent.
Okay, we'll get your answer, thank you.
We can always take it off the consent if you don't like the answer yet.
Okay, so we'll move this one to consent, and that is item B. So we'll go to item C, which is to discuss the city's service agreement with the Veterans and Community Outreach Foundation, VCOF, to provide services and programs to Clarkston Veterans residents in two thousand and twenty-four, funded through ARPA grant in the amount of six thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, same, similar explanation. The council approved money for the VCOF, and we just needed to do a formal agreement to make sure that the money is used for the purpose in which it was allocated.
Any questions from the council? Anyone signed up from the public? No. With that being said, is this, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did have a question, sorry. Interim City Manager Jones, do we, do we have more detailed record-keeping for the activities that this nonprofit performed?
Yes, all of these are reimbursable, and so before the city provides them with a reimbursement, we ask for detailed information on what they use the money for.
Okay, gotcha. Were there any metrics attached to this when it went before council in terms of, you know, do we know who's being served? Do we know if it's a COVID-related, things like that originally?
I wasn't here originally.
It was in the original MOU. It's laid out.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, it's not attached, that's, that is, but yeah, I would like to, I think, see that at some point. I'm, okay, putting it on the consent agenda, similar to Councilwoman Hood, but, yeah, well, I'll reserve my comments until I see that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. So counsel, is this something for consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes, okay, thank you all. And we'll do D, which is to discuss the service, city services agreement with Clarkston Community Center to provide ESL classes to Clarkston residents in two thousand and twenty-four, funded through ARPA grant in the amount of forty thousand. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the Clarkston Community Center to provide ESL training classes to Clarkston residents. As I mentioned previously, this particular funding was approved in the budget, and we are going through this process to make it a formal approval process for making sure that the entity uses the money for which it was allocated for.
Are there questions related to this item? Yes, Councilwoman Bell, and then Councilman Perkins. Oh, and I'm sorry, Councilman Perkins, would you please take the opportunity at this time to make, say a statement?
Sorry. Yes, so again, pursuant to Chapter Two, Article Three, Division One, Sections Two, Five, Four of our Clarkson Code of Ethics, I'm going to recuse myself because of potential business dealings with the nonprofit involved, so I will leave.
Okay. And when we're done with this, we'll have someone come get you. Okay, Councilwoman Bell?
So I have a quick question, this is for Attorney Quinn. When I look at the contract, because I know that we're getting these officially signed, what I don't see in the deliverables or even a deliverable subsection of what will be returned to the city. So like even a report with metrics, or like how do they utilize the funds? But am I overlooking that? I know I skimmed it last night and today, but I didn't see it.
Should have been in the scope of services.
Well, looking at the scope of services.
We're on the Clarkston Community Center?
Yes.
But, but I think it's consistent for all of them, if I'm being honest with you.
Well, the scope of services is attached, so it's Attachment A. And it's, you can see they've got their letterhead on there.
Yeah, but that's the services that they're providing.
Right.
What I don't see is the deliverable that they're going to give back to the city, which should be closer to the end of the contract.
In the back of that, part of that, behind that proposal, is the report for the previous year's ESL report.
Yeah, so that's helpful. But what I don't see consistently across the board is that in our contracts, that we're getting a binding agreement, well, whoever the vendor or the employee or contractor is, that there are deliverables that are required to return back to the city.
Well, it all depends on the, I mean, I don't think we can put every kind of contract into the same bucket. I mean, in this cases, it's a reimbursement basis, so the deliverable is not a piece of a written deliverable, it's a service. And then in order to get reimbursed, then the, I guess you could call their receipts and invoices deliverables.
But the receipt is for the scope of services that they are rendering, based off the scope of work. What I'm saying is that in our contract language, that there should be a subsection that says deliverable is, by this date, there's a report with metrics and indication of how does, how do you, like how the services were rendered that is returned to the city. Now, that's a standardized function that I use every day when I do contracts with contractors, and what I'm saying is, in our contract, that's a one line and a deliverable section of it. Is that something that we can't do, or that's something that we just have not been in the practice of doing?
There's no legal reason we could not do that. I mean, I think that we would need either the vendor or the vendor in cooperation with the staff to provide that information as far as of what, what you're calling a deliverable. You know, the only thing I have to go by is what they submitted, which is Exhibit A.
Okay. I have a question.
Okay, so I'm going to let Councilwoman Hood and then Council, Vice Mayor Johnson.
Yes, I have a comment, a question, sort of related to Councilmember Bell's, but I didn't see what level of service they are committing to from the standpoint of number of people who would go through this program. There's excellent documentation of, an analysis of what they have done in the past, and this seems to be a successful program, but again, for, for forty thousand dollars, are they proposing to service ten to twenty people? What, you know, that kind of information would be helpful to me in making decisions about allocating funds.
So if I'm not mistaken, it does say, due to the funding from the city, we will be able to serve twenty adults and seniors, whereas previously, we would serve ten. And that's on the last sheet.
Right.
And my question is for the city attorney.
Okay.
I am looking at this grant report, and I see that they service seventy-eight people. This is an ESL program, so my concern is that we have no verification of who they're servicing. All we have are numbers of people based on if they were Haitian, Ethiopian, because we're doing this every year, and are the same people taking the classes? We don't have that. We have our stats of nationality, so I would like to see some names so that we can see that we're servicing everybody and not the same four or five people here, there, and I'm trying to figure out, yeah, can we get a little more data than just male, female, nine fifteen, Ethiopian, Haitian? I think they would have to have some type of registration process so that we can, whatever HIPAA will allow us to see, if we could see it, so we'll know who we're servicing.
Okay. And Councilwoman Bell?
I think my colleagues are alluding to my initial question. If we had a deliverable section at the end of the contract, we could specify that, because I think the other question that is a, a little more question up front of that, is how many of these individuals that were served are actual residents of our city that we're providing funds for? Because I know they can't service all seventy-eight of them with the funds that they give us, because they gave us a projected amount of individuals that they could serve. But if we had one section in all the contracts with just a deliverable, a metric, that align, we also wouldn't have to ask them later on for a report, because it would be a part of the initial contract. That's why I'm asking that question, Stephen.
Right.
I certainly have no objection to adding these details.
Okay.
You know, obviously, there'll need to be a conversation with the community center to.
And I was checking this, yeah, and I was going to check to see if Sammy or Amber were on the call on Zoom. They are, okay.
Yeah.
Amber, is that you?
It is.
Okay, you, you heard us talking.
I did, I'm ready to jump in.
I knew you were, so come on, tell us what you're going to do for us and the residents.
Oh, yeah, I definitely agree with Councilman Bell. We do need deliverables of metrics, that's something that initially was, when we spoke with the previous city manager, that was discussed, specifically within the MOU, just spelling out exactly what you would need from us, documentation, deliverables, all of that, that was not provided at that time. So we provided what we assumed to be provided, to be honest. As far as the target number, the target number is fifty people. We did service seventy-eight. I have no issue providing you with documentation or registration because we do have that. All of our people are registered for our class, and that fifty includes the people who are part of the technology class, as well as the English classes, both virtual and in-person. As it relates to initial, additional metrics to show growth, anything of that nature, specifically with whether or not these people are returning people to this class, or if they're moving on to the next level, they are all required to take a pre-imposed assessment or placement test at the beginning. Based upon that placement test, that determines whether or not they're going to be in beginner English classes or intermediate slash advanced classes. Also, I want to make sure you understand how our program operates. It operates on the same basis as a school year, so we have a fall semester and a spring semester, which means that the people who are in class in the fall, starting in August of two thousand and twenty-three, these are the same people who roll over into the spring, just like you would in a traditional school setting. So they will be expected to exit or be promoted. So they will be expected to exit or be promoted to the next level based upon where their placement test is at the very end, the post-assessment. So they get a, they get a placement test at the beginning. They have a test in the middle that just measures how much they've learned within that semester because we do have turnover because we have people that get jobs with them in the program or they have to get jobs based upon when they resettled here, the funding is still available, so they tend to get jobs. And then again, like I said, in the spring semester in May, they get their final test. So the bulk of our students do move on. Some of them kind of stay in the middle in the sense of it all depends upon the level that they are on when they come. We have some people who begin at beginner level who have never held a pencil before. So they would be considered at the pre-literacy stage, which means they're not going to move on to the intermediate level by the end of May. More than likely, they will remain in that beginner level class. But that doesn't mean that we won't, that we'll close registration. We'll continue to enroll people as long as we have the staff available to teach.
Okay, and so we have someone has a question.
I have a question for you, Amber. So if someone registers in the fall and they get promoted to the spring, how, how many semesters or fall-springs that they should attend or they are allowed to attend? Meaning if they're not getting it.
So the goal is they would attend, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm just saying if, for instance, they're a little slower than average, do y'all allow them to continue until they're comfortable in their speaking or how does that work?
So, yeah, so if someone is coming in at pre-literacy level, meaning that they tested the lowest probably within their placement test, they would be expected to continue. They would, they would still complete the fall and spring semester, so that would be one full school year. And the idea would be that they would be continuing for at least one more semester, but with more targeted work with tutors that will come in to assist them. From there, the teacher will give them a post-assessment and after that, they will be promoted to whatever the next level is, be whatever, you know, level that they're in.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I'm also hearing here is that we want to have a list of participants who are part of the program. We want to know if that person, if those people are residents of Clarkston who, in terms of that funding piece? And the metrics in terms of the pre- and post, did you want to see the pre- and post? And then is there any other metrics that council would like to have? Councilwoman Bell, then?
I think it would be great to, for the contractor or the organization that we're working with to tell us how they define a success. Is that you're being able to increase participation? Is that you're diversifying participation? Is that, you know, people going to the next level and staying committed to the process? Like what's that pipeline of success that we're building on throughout this partnership? That would be helpful for me to know.
Okay, Councilman Yasu.
I would say that although I would love to see more Clarkston residents be participants in the program, I think it would be also great to, to give the opportunity to other, mostly new Americans who probably might not live within the city limit, but who are strongly linked and connected with our city. And some of them probably might have lived in the past, maybe in the future might live in the city. But I think limiting it only to city residents, I don't know why we would do that because.
So let me remind you, let me remind you, this is also kind of how we did, this is the ARPA funding where we did with COVID. And we kept up with the numbers, especially with the zip code and making sure that the people have the three zero zero two one. It is not to preclude that we want, don't want to support people, but in keeping with the standards and making sure that we're in compliance with the audit that we'll have to go through in terms of the federal dollars. We want to make sure that we stay within the guidelines that we have been doing with the additional funds that we've had throughout COVID. Yes, absolutely.
I agree with the guidelines, but I don't know if the guidelines wants us to preclude anybody. I mean, as long as it's.
It doesn't, we're just, we're not saying that we don't want to preclude. We just need to get a list of the participants, the data. So we just want to make sure we have the data. So all we're trying to make sure throughout this process, everything we're doing, we're going through a lot of standardization, doing a lot of stuff, bless the city manager. But we're trying to make sure that we look at things from transparency. We're documenting our processes. We're making sure that we're accountable in terms of how we're servicing the people that are using the funds. This is what we're making sure we're doing. So at a minimum, these things. But also, Amber, we want you to give us how you're measuring success. And we even talked about that offline as well. So let us know how you are measuring success. Would you follow up with our city manager to provide that? And we will then follow up and make sure that's included with the documentation that we have for next council meeting. Is that fine for everyone? Is that fine?
I have a add-on.
Yes.
Amber, can you let us know if there's more of a need? Meaning I see you service seventy-eight people. So at some point, this is ARPA, so if there's a big demand for your program, can you let us see that data also? Like you may have a waiting list of fifty people and you're servicing seventy-eight. So we'll see what the needs of the community is.
And Mr. Deffna, we've already allocated all the funds.
Right, no, it's not for this year.
Okay, okay.
It's going forward.
Okay, 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 no problem. Okay, with that being said, do we have any comments from the public? Hearing none, is this an item for consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Consent, consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, outstanding. Councilman Carol, would you? Yeah, Councilman Perkins. Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is item E, to discuss an agreement with Clarkston Development Foundation Incorporated for the Tell Me a Story Program funded through the General Fund Community Action Budget fiscal year 2024 in the amount of seven thousand. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. The Tell Me a Story event is scheduled for Saturday, September the fourteenth, at the Clarkston Community Center from eleven AM to three PM. The Tell Me a Story Program is an annual celebration program, a gathering of storytellers, childcare programs, social service, literacy, health agencies, families and children. The purpose of the Tell Me a Story Program is to promote the importance of reading and literacy activities for all children, birth to age eight, and to foster connection between the city of Clarkston's diverse residents and the broader community. The amount is for seven thousand dollars and it's my understanding was Roberta is on the Zoom meeting, in case you have questions.
Okay, Council, this is an annual event that we've sponsored for several years now, almost nine or ten years that we've been supporting this event. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
I still would like to see a budget behind this program. It's a one-day event, so we've never received one.
Okay.
I love the services, but we still need to see a breakdown of how that seven thousand dollars is being used.
Okay, and Ms. Roberta? Ms. Roberta Malavenda?
Yes, I think I'm unmuted now.
Okay.
Actually, the budget was in our proposal and somehow we neglected to put it into the appendix. The primary funding budget item for this is three thousand six hundred dollars for space rental at the Clarkston Community Center, which is over half the budget. The rest of the budget is to contract with storytellers and interpreters and printing. And we can add the actual budget into the MOU. That would be easy to do.
Thank you.
But that, that gives you an overview of the, of the breakdown of the budget.
Okay, and any questions from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Bell.
That's the same statement as I made across before. I just think that we need to have that deliverable across all contracts. I'm not going to make this statement anymore.
Okay.
But I just want to make it clear. That way we don't have to ask the vendor that we're working with for the same stuff over and over.
Okay, all right, so we'll make sure count, we have that on the contracts. Any other questions from the public? Anyone signed up for that? Okay, all right, with that, is this item for consent as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Consent, okay, all right, and we will consent, okay. And so we'll move on to item G, which is to discuss an ordinance approving the annexation of parcels eighteen zero nine five. Oh, I skipped, I skipped that one, I'm sorry. Item F, which is to discuss an agreement with Clarkston Development Foundation for the Clarkston Early Learning Task Force funded through the General Fund Community Action Budget fiscal year 2024 in the amount of ten thousand. Interim City Manager Jones.
The city of Clarkston Early Learning Task Force will continue to meet in 2024 to promote equitable early care and learning policies, procedures and programs. They are not requesting funding for the task force operations in 2024, but they are requesting funding for three activities that were developed by the task force. These three activities are the Story Walk at Friendship Forest, the City of Clarkston Early Learning Information Fair and the Department of Early Care and Learning and Partners Early Care and Learning Dialogue Log. And they are requesting ten thousand dollars. This, of course, as I mentioned earlier, was approved in the budget for fiscal year 2024.
Okay, Council, are there any questions? Councilwoman Bell.
Is Ms. Roberta, you still on? Can I ask, can I?
Yes.
So.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. You said there are three events, correct?
I'm sorry?
You said there were three events that you're looking for reimbursement of the ten thousand dollars for, is that correct?
There are three events, yes.
And do you have an expenditure analysis of what you spent it on? Because ten thousand dollars is an even number and I don't believe in even numbers. Typically know that that's not how things are paid out, so I would just like to see the expenditures for the three items. So that's, that was my request. Do you have those or do you know exactly how much?
Yes, we do. And there is a breakdown of the expenses, maybe not in the detail that you would like, in the appendix.
Oh, so are you telling me, may I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Are you telling me that thirty-six hundred dollars for the scope of work for the Story Walk plus the thirty-six fifty for the Early Learning Information Fair? And then the one thousand nine hundred and fifty for the scope of work for the decal and the Partners Early Care and Learning Dialogue Log? That is the total of the ten thousand?
Right, and we actually had a breakdown of the budget again in our proposal, which was not attached, and we can go back and put in the specific numbers for each. The, the Story Walk budget is primarily a consultant who actually does the laminating and puts the books into the stands and monitors the stands, makes sure they're in good shape, and some money for laminating are the two expenses there. The expenses for the Early Learning Fair, which is our third annual, again is for space rental and printing, and I've got the breakdown in the budget for that. The expenses for the Dialogue again are for space rental at Georgia Piedmont Technical College and printing.
Okay, Councilwoman Bell.
So the reason I asked that question, Roberta, because I added those three events, so, and it's nine hundred two hundred dollars. So either you didn't include an expense in your analysis or something is missing to get you to the ten thousand. I don't want to shorten you, but I'm just, I can only go for what you provided.
All right, we'll go back and look at the budget. My math may have been, been wrong or maybe it's nine thousand eight hundred.
No worries.
All right, any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Malavenda, this is the second request we're looking at tonight for CDF. Is there a reason all of this is not in one MOU or you just wanted to keep it separate? I'm just curious.
That's a good question. The Storytelling Festival has been an annual event that we've always had a separate MOU. And we, for some reason, kept it separate because it's, I think, in our seventh or eighth year. And these other events, these other activities are more recent and came out of the work of the Clarkston Early Learning Task Force. There's really no reason, I don't think, that I can think of, to have more than one MOU, but we've just traditionally done it that way the last three years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, any more questions from the council? Anyone signed up for this item?
The other reason, excuse me, there are two separate pots of money. One is the ten thousand dollars that's been allocated specifically to the Clarkston Early Learning Task Force and that's the money for the three projects. And the seven thousand dollars has been a separate line item in budget. And that's why we've pretty much always done two separate MOUs.
Okay, so going back, what we'll make sure in terms of the actual amounts, you'll go back and review those amounts that you have for?
Yes.
Okay, and then Councilwoman, Councilman, I'll get you, Councilman Perkins and then Councilman Yasu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So on the note of the Clarkston Early Learning Task Force, would it be possible to have the task force present a little bit of the initiatives that they've come up with, the rationale behind those? Perhaps some theory of change models if that has also been done, just so we understand. Again, you know, if we're trying to address early learning needs, we need to know, you know, specifically the root causes we're trying to address as a community that inform our decision-making and especially if we're allocating money towards it, you know, understanding how that's creating a positive impact in the community itself. So I don't know if the council would be okay with moving that, maybe not to this council meeting, but maybe.
We already talked, Roberta and I already talked about presenting to the council and it's probably going to be the next month meeting so that she has time. So one of the other tasks, and I don't know if I got the email from you, was to reappoint those people back to the task force as well. So, so they, whether they're going to go ahead and present to us. So we got you covered on that one.
Got it.
Councilman Yasu.
I just want to quickly, if I'm not mistaken, I think the, the way the, I think that might be probably to our city manager. So it's not that we, I don't think we write out ten thousand dollar check. It would be reimbursement based on receipts. And I think this is just the proposal up to ten thousand dollars, but I really doubt it's to the cent. So I think this is just to approve the MOU, but it will not be like a blank check, ten thousand dollars. So I just want to make that clear to my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is this item for consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, you've got this of consent. Thank you, Roberta. And we'll move on to item G, which is to discuss an ordinance approving the annexation of parcels eighteen zero nine five zero nine zero zero eight at ten seventy-eight Nielsen Drive. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. We received in writing a request from, first individual, I guess I shouldn't have to say the name, but the owners of one zero seven eight Nelson Drive requesting that they be deannexed out of the city of Clarkston. Primarily, the two property owners were displeased with the fact that they were in, not able to vote in the city of Clarkston elections back in November. And therefore, they are requesting to be deannexed.
Okay. And we have the residents, if you have anything, we will, I guess if, any questions from the council, yes?
I am honestly very sad to hear that they were disallowed because especially they have been, they have been steadily supporting our community. They have been coming to our council meetings. I'm not sure how that happened, but I think that's the cap county that did it. It's really beyond our ask, but I really hope that you will continue, still stay engaged with the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And it's, and it's one of those disappointing things, especially because as a city, we weren't notified about this situation happening either. And so it's sad that you have to turn around and find out when you. about this situation happening either, and so it's sad that you have to turn around and find out when you go to vote, um, about this type of change. And so, um, we're going to have to have some more conversations with our county in terms of how they're dealing with some of those properties, especially the ones where half of the property is in Clarkston and the other half is in DeKalb, and DeKalb said, "We want to take it," but they don't tell us. So, um, we're sorry about that, um, and, 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 you know, I understand, hey, taxes matter too. So I don't blame you, I understand. So council, do you have any other comments at this time? Yes.
Well, I want to know how this could have happened, and so, um, I know that the county did this, but did we follow up with them after this? And I, I guess I'm looking at the, the city manager or the city planning economic development director?
Well, I think that what happened was, until you found out, it was when you went to go vote. And then by that time, they were in the midst of voting, so it was kind of one of those situations where it wasn't a lot of times. But the city never gave us notification, the county never gave us notification of the changes to those parcels.
So since this was brought to our attention last year, have we followed up with the county?
Mm-hmm.
To let them know that we're displeased with their action and the inability for those individuals that come to our meeting consistently, we see them all the time, to not be able to vote in our election? And what was their response?
I, I know Ms. Tamika can't speak, uh, because of the audio issues, or can she speak now? Okay, all right, uh, she's the one that reached out directly to the, the DeKalb County.
So I've had, um, numerous conversations with, um, several representatives from the county, um, trying to rectify the situation and figure out what happened. Um, and from different individuals, I was told that, um, the markings had been changed prior to, um, this current election that we had in twenty twenty-three. Um, I asked if the city was ever notified prior to my arrival. Um, they said they were not sure. Um, some of their employees at the time dealing with this matter had resigned, and so they did not have concrete information to give me.
Yes.
I also have a question, so, um, is this a legal requirement that's out to our city attorney? From the agenda item, I read that it says if the living quarters are within the county, the person would be voting in the county, but that's kind of weird. I, I thought if it really is, I thought it's up to the resident to choose where they want to be.
So legally, where a parcel is split by the municipal boundary, then the rule that you look at is which side of that boundary is the residence on? And I've even seen cases where the line split the residence, and then the next level is like, where are the bedrooms? And so, I mean, I think the law just sort of searches for a way to resolve a tricky situation. So I, I think, assuming that DeKalb County was, I, I, I worked with Ms. Mitchell on this at the time and looked at the maps with her, and assuming that DeKalb County's GIS accurately depicts the exact location of the municipal boundary, I believe that the county made the right decision, even if they did a poor job of communicating that to those impacted. I mean, DA, so that's the voting question. It's not a legal requirement that we approve the annexation, it's a request by the property owners.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, I think, um, we should change our, our map as soon as possible to show that these parcels are no lo, no longer within this city boundary, because this takes the whole parcel out, am I correct?
That's true, but to be clear, it's a multi-step process.
Right.
The final step is DeKalb County's Board of Commissioners has to vote to consent to the deannexation. And only once that occurs would it be appropriate to change our map.
Right, and so I've read that, and that's important. I don't know why they wouldn't agree to getting tax money, but, um, so that we can go ahead and make sure when all the approvals are done that we, we show that these are no longer in the city. And also, um, I guess, communicate with the, or DeKalb should to communicate with the Board of Elections and, or the Tax Assessor's Office to make sure that they don't get two tax bills, one from us and one from the county. I mean, this is, this is really inside baseball when it comes to bureaucracy.
Yep, this is just step one, so, um, Councilman Carroll.
Yeah, I do want to say I apologize that y'all had to go through this. I know it's frustrating, it's frustrating for us too when we heard about it from the county. Um, the other thing I would say is that I think there are other parcels in the city that are in a similar situation, where half of them are in the county and half are in the city. So my suggestion is to approach those property owners and ask them, "Do you want to annex or deannex?" And so that, that way, they could either have the entirety of their property within the city limits, or they could have the entirety out. And rather than having to deal with this situation again, since unfortunately, we don't control DeKalb's communication or DeKalb's decision-making on this. So that's my suggestion to prevent this from happening again in the future, because it is unfortunate.
Yeah, Councilman Perkins?
Uh, Councilman Carroll stole most of my words out of my mouth, but again, I also want to apologize to y'all that this, uh, happened, even if it was out of our control in some way. Uh, it, it's a fundamental democratic right to vote. Um, and so for that to get lost in paperwork is unconscionable. So, uh, we will definitely miss you guys, uh, if this goes through. Uh, we're glad, I hope you stay neighbors, even if you are outside, just outside of our city limits. Um, but I do want to, uh, just add details even to what Councilman Carroll is suggesting. This might be something for our Housing and Public Infrastructure Committee to, to take on, um, in collaboration with our Planning and Zoning Director as well. I know, for example, Fox Trail Apartments, um, half of the complex, and some of it splits a building, um, is, uh, within Clarkston city limits, and the other half is in DeKalb, depending on which way you, you tend to drive out. And so I think just from a public safety standpoint, in terms of clarifying police responses, clarifying who our constituents are, um, I would suggest that we do take this as a serious review. Um, and, and I like your suggestion as well, Councilman Carroll, of giving people the opportunity to decide. You know, hopefully, hopefully they pick us, um, but, uh, I, I think that's only fair. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So with that, are there any, anyone signed up for this? Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's, uh, two.
That's what we got.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh, good evening.
We got.
Two people, it's, uh, it's two, it's Jerome Compton first, and then Katie Jones.
Yes, so I'm Jeremy Compton, and I do live at ten seventy-eight, and this is my wife, Katie Jones, and, um, you know, we've lived there since twenty sixteen. I had a bunch of stuff written down, but really, the council kind of hit everything I wanted to talk about. The, uh, right, we couldn't vote. Um, we live in Clarkston, our taxes are higher. I look across the street at ten seventy-seven Nielsen, and we're separated by a twenty-foot road, and the taxes are thirteen hundred dollars less. I think when I look at the two tax bills, the only thing I can really see a difference in is when our trash is picked up. It's going to go from Monday to Tuesday, and I think for thirteen hundred dollars, I can live with that. Um, but some of the council on here, I mean, you know, Ms. YT and Mr. Carroll and Mr. Alwitt, we've been a part of a lot of these meetings in the past. You know, we spent almost two solid years coming up, doing some work sessions, being part of the actual council meetings, so I was glad to be a part of that. Um, we're leaving now, but we are requesting, formally requesting to be deannexed from the City of Clarkston at this time. Um, and you know, the only thing I have to say is, like, in the packet, um, you know, it says that we were displeased, and I, I would have asked you that question, would you be displeased with what happened to you? So kind of put yourself in our shoes, if you would, so, but I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and I will just add again, Katie Jones, ten seventy-eight Nielsen. Um, you know, I, voting is coming up a lot, and yes, obviously, voting is a fundamental right, and, you know, I think I didn't vote because I couldn't. And, um, thankfully, you know, our neighbors have been really on top of it and helped kind of shepherd this process through. But it's not just the voting. Um, you know, we've called the police several times, and they could never figure out where we lived. We've called Clarkston, they said, "No, you're in DeKalb." We've called DeKalb, and they give us back to Clarkston. And thankfully, those weren't life-threatening or life-or-death situations, but imagine if they had been. Like, you're talking about properties that are on the line, like, God forbid, they're never in that situation, right? Like, you have to figure this out quickly, um, because it was just a frustration for us, but that could be, like I said, life or death for someone else. Um, so, you know, I think that's a big thing, we're paying for, we've been, well, we still are, paying taxes for a police department that's not serving us. We're paying taxes for a city council that doesn't represent us, um, that we didn't get to vote for, you know? And so I think for the last six months or so, we've been really frustrated with all of that, and we've, we've really, um, you know, it's a hard decision, obviously, we've enjoyed coming to the council meetings, we've enjoyed being involved. I was on a, a city committee, um, you know, I've been really engaged, and, um, and I, I do hope to still stay engaged in the city. Um, but I, you know, I think it's been a little disheartening watching the contention that's been in the city council. Today seems better, um, but for a while there, there was, um, you know, things didn't seem good. And, um, I'm hoping that Clarkston gets back to a place where we can be proud to be your neighbors, um, and, and we'll be pulling for it.
Thank you. Okay, with that, is this an item? You, yeah, you're the next one, okay, thanks.
Consent.
Consent.
Consent, okay. All right, and we'll go to item H, which is to discuss an ordinance approving the annexation of parcel eighteen zero nine five zero nine zero zero nine at ten eighty-six Nielsen Drive. Um, interim city manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, this, this background is very similar to the one I just went over. Uh, these individuals located at, uh, one zero eight six Nelson Drive, uh, submitted in writing to the city the request to be deannexed. Um, it, uh, had to do with the voting situation, that they were not able to vote in the November twenty twenty-three municipal elections. Um, and therefore, they are requesting to be deannexed from the City of Clarkston.
Okay, and again, same sentiments, we, we truly apologize for you being in that situation. Um, unless council has any more to add, please, if you'd like to come up and say something.
As you know, from the.
Sarah in, uh, Daniel Zagami?
Yes, I'm Sarah Zagami, and I live at ten eighty-six Nielsen Drive. Um, I have our information there, and like our neighbors said, um, it's been a very frustrating several months. I really appreciate, uh, Jamie in the beginning helping to connect me with, uh, Ms. Mitchell, and, um, the time and energy that, um, she and the city attorney poured into examining this whole issue back and forth, back and forth, and it's, doesn't seem to be, uh, wasn't a clear-cut situation for a long time. I was just making phone calls to the county, to everybody, saying, "How do we fix this? I just want a decision, I want an, I just want an answer." And that's what was really frustrating, is just people not, um, coming to a decision, coming to an answer. And then finally, I was, I was advised that, you know, really the best thing to do is to request deannexation, because voting is a big part of it, and it's not all of it. But, yeah, if we can't vote, you know, to choose our council, I teach my children at home, and we've been studying American history. No taxation without representation, it's pretty obvious. So I'm glad that you guys are in agreement on that, that it's an unfortunate thing that has happened here, and I want to thank you all. Um, we're certainly going to continue to be good neighbors. Um, our lives, our, our work, everything is in Clarkston. So we still very much consider ourselves a part of Clarkston. And, um, but like Buddy and Katie said, the police issue is concerning, and we have another house on the other side of us, that I, I really think they need to be made aware of the situation. They've just moved into that house, they're a refugee family. We haven't really had a chance to get to know them yet. They have no idea that they're going to fall between the cracks too with the police service, with the voting, with all this stuff. So I totally agree with what Councilman, uh, Carroll and Councilman Perkins are suggesting, that you guys examine all these properties, um, and figure out what would be in the best interests of the residents. Um, so, yeah, thank you very much for your time and for your understanding.
Okay, thank you. And with that, can this item also be consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you all. Did you? Okay, did, okay.
Uh, good afternoon, my, or evening, my name is Kim All, and I live in the same, um, complex with them, and I actually live in the middle of both of them. And, um, I would just like to, um, encourage everyone in the room, the fact that Tamika and, and Jamie actually took time and personally tried to get, um, tried to get information for you is the reason why you pay thirteen hundred, and the rest of us pay a lot less, and we get a lot less service. And so I think that, um, I would like to encourage and challenge everyone in the room to make this, uh, something that we actually, um, both, both of my neighbors have the power to, um, hold DeKalb County accountable, because this is not the only issue, it's with the business license, it's with, um, you know, trying to get the, um, fire department out for businesses. Um, thi, this is holding, um, everyone a hostage. And so, believe me, as someone who gets service from DeKalb County, there, there are several of our neighbors that want to actually annex in, and it's for the reason that your representatives are actually your neighbors. You actually can s, talk to your chief of police, you can actually make an appointment with your neighbor. So, um, as a person literally in the middle, I would just like for you, um, to, um, consider, and even the, the, um, council to consider a committee for this, that we strengthen our municipality, hopefully get the entire Clark Estates involved. And I think that we have a strong enough, uh, collaboration as a community, Clark Estate community, that we can actually push some, um, uh, make some things really happen on a positive note. And with the, with the help of the Clarkston government, I think they will have to listen, because we're, we're a very grounded and, um, established community. So it's not like, you know, just, um, this community that's just been built up. People have been there for sixty, seventy years, I've been there almost thirty years. So, um, just, I would just encourage you and challenge us all to carefully consider that. Um, and I know that you guys don't want to have residents, but Clark Estates has very strong, um, residents, and we are a collective and collaborative community, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, this item will be consent agenda. And we will move on to, um, to discuss PLOS two, Mel Avenue at CSX Operational and Safety Improvement Project. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's my understanding that the council has, uh, contracted with Volkurt and Associates in late twenty twenty-two to develop design and construction plans that meet the Georgia Department of Transportation requirements, um, concerning this particular project. Uh, the concept layout is ninety percent complete, and so tonight, we are just, uh, needing council approval to move forward, uh, with the plans that have been, uh, constructed. Um, our, or designed, rather, is what I should say. And so Larry Kaiser is here, our city engineer, in case you have specific questions on this particular agenda item. Uh, but it's my understanding this has been in the works for a while.
Yes. Okay, council, do you have any questions on this particular item? Councilman Carroll?
So my one question is, it says that there's a twelve-month period to acquire right-of-way. For some reason, I thought the city already had right-of-way for this project. Is that, was I wrong about that, or is it?
No, uh, good afternoon, I should say. Um, councilman, unfortunately, no. So there is, uh, some amount of right-of-way that will be acquired along East Postaleone, um, on the, what is that, the east side of Mel Avenue, a small amount. There is a small amount of right-of-way we have to acquire, uh, on Northern Avenue, uh, not at the U-Haul, but just right before the U-Haul, there's a little sliver of land. And so there is some amount of land. And so, there is some amount of land that has to be acquired. There's still the question of, um, the U-Haul location, which I'll go into the details. Uh, that land is actually government-owned and not privately-owned, so there's going to be some amount of negotiations uh, with that property, and I shouldn't say negotiations, I should say, um, proving to them that's a government piece of property. Um, and so, there is about a twelve-month period of time that's going to be required.
So, the, so, to follow up to that, that is property that U-Haul has been using for decades? Cause I, I know I've seen that at least twenty years.
Correct.
Um, is that county-owned property?
So, when the city annexed
Mm-hmm.
that side of Church Street back in, what, two thousand fourteen or fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the county had ownership of that. So, when annexation occurred, I don't know the law, but I assume, I can only assume, that, that any land also became city-owned, right? And so, my suspicion is that it is city-owned property at this point in time.
Okay, I'll, I'll turn to our attorney for clarification on this.
Sure, thanks. Um, I mean, obviously, I would need to dig into the details of this particular property to give a really firm answer. But generally speaking, when annexation occurs, um, rights of way owned by the county are transferred to the city.
Okay.
But if it's more like a par- you know, the county can own property
Mm-hmm.
like any, uh, private party can. And so, if it's more like a parcel, that would not automatically transfer. And so, I, I think I can, we would just need to do, I, I would need to get a little better understanding of the background.
Okay.
And then, um, uh, I would feel pretty optimistic that the county would accommodate us either way, based on what I've heard.
Okay, and I guess my only concern is, is that they've been on there so long. Um-
The U-Haul?
Mm-hmm.
Right, well, it's not possible, um, to a- acquire property from a government entity by using it.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, I think we, like Mr. Kaiser said, start by educating them.
Mm-hmm.
But if it comes all the way down to it, then we'll finish by demanding that they get off our property.
Okay.
So, Ms. Mayor, we have had very surface-level conversations with management, only that. Um, no intimate details, no intimate conversations, because if we do receive federal funding on this, if anybody, the city, myself, anybody, goes in and starts negotiating, then we could lose our potential of federal funds.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from the, yes, Councilwoman Hood, I'm sorry?
I have a, a number of questions about the conceptual plan.
Put your mic on.
We don't, uh, excuse me, I, I don't think-
There you go.
I don't think tonight is the time to get into those. But I, um, would hope that we could get a, a plat that shows the current alignment of all, uh, at this whole project area, so that we can compare it to what is the proposed, because there's some pretty significant changes in this intersection. Um, and I think it would be important for the council to understand uh, how the whole intersection would work. I see that we're getting a, uh, two, uh, an additional signal. And so, I have questions about how that would be synchronized, I have questions about turn lanes. Um, I know that, uh, it appears that on Me- on Ponce at Mel, there's enough right-of-way to have a turn lane there, but where it, the plan doesn't show one. So, uh, that's why I have a nu- number of questions. Uh, and I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to go ahead and have a public meeting on this, uh, and get the public's input on how that intersection would function. Now, I realize this is not the final plan, but perhaps enough of the plan has been developed that the public could understand it and, uh, you know, remark about it.
So, the plan, so, answer your question about public involvement. The, the normal procedure on a federally-funded project is to perform the concept layout. We're about ninety percent there.
Right.
What you see is, in all likelihood, what Georgia Department of Transportation will accept, just, just to make that statement. So, when the concept is completed, that is the normal process, where we have a public information open house at that point in time. Nothing says that you can't have an extra one now, in, in form the public of what's being, what's occurring, we can do that. But that's a little bit different process, it's not going to jeopardize any funding, but if you want to have another meeting, we can do that. I think the meeting needs to be more of informational gathering from the public, for us to explain to them what's going on. Public involvement in terms of indicating that they don't want that alignment to go to the U-Haul, as an example. Or, we don't need to have two traffic signals, as an example. Unfortunately, that won't fly with Georgia DOT. And so, I think it's more of us providing information to the public, as opposed to the public telling us how the intersection needs to be designed. And so, I just wanted to make sure that's, that's stated.
And that's, that's fine. I ju- I just think that this has such a significant impact on traffic through our two main arterials. And now would be a, a good time, as you say, to get the public's input about it, and certain things are given.
Well, the two traffic signals, just to make a sta- one, one more thirty seconds. The two traffic signals will be synchronized, I've already looked at the details. And, and so, that is, that's a wonderful thing, obviously, from a safety standpoint.
Right.
Um, traffic flow across those railroad tracks will be such that you will not have traffic backed up over the railroad tracks, which is also a great safety function. Um, you're going to have a better flow of traffic movement, for the most part. There's, there is potential of some additional backup of traffic on some legs of the approach, because you have a traffic signal, right? But overall, traffic movement, congestion, and safety will be dramatically improved with the, with this project.
And, and I think that's a good message
Mm-hmm.
for the public, to explain to them what changes are being made to resolve many issues that we have there.
At council's, you know, direction, you know, we can set that up as need be.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Bell, and Councilman Perkins?
Can I make a recommendation to Councilmember Hood's suggestion? I think this will be a good opportunity to get Mr. Kaiser to the Transportation and Environmental Committee, um, to start that educational process and do some of the input session, but that's up to the chair. But I'd be willing to help, I think, maybe on vice chair or something, I don't know.
Right, and, and Councilman, um, Perkins?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so, uh, I believe, uh, Councilwoman Hood mentioned the absence of a turning lane on Mel is a question. Um, I think I asked you that question a, a while back at some point, uh, because I, I do live in that area. Um, so, I have sort of a two-part question. One, could, could you briefly just sort of give the, the challenges, the design challenges to that? So, that's part one, which I think, to the, to the point on, on having a public information session, I think it would be good for the public to kind of understand, you know, the bullet-pointed version of, hey, here, here's some of the design limitations we have. You know, here's some of the CSX limitations we have. Um, so, if I could make that recommendation as well. So, point one is, or question one is, can you unpack the, uh, the turning lane there? And then, question two, um, is related to the pedestrian walkways. And so, um, I, I can't tell you how many near misses I've seen coming out of that. I'm surprised we have not had anyone killed there or seriously injured. Um, uh, in, in, uh, the pedestrian side of it, uh, I don't know if there's a way at this point or in the near future to add a crosswalk on the western side, sort of the two-eighty-five side of Mel, or of Church Street. And, and my reason for asking that is, most people could care less about the traffic light on the other side now. So, I think if there's any way to just have, just something that alerts drivers to the fact that people are going to be crossing on that side of the intersection as well, um, from a public safety standpoint, I think it could, you know, add a lot. So, anyway, I don't know if that, kind of, kind of mixed my questions there, is that clear enough?
I think it does. So, response to number one, CSX.
Or, turning lane.
Turning lane.
Sorry, yeah.
So, you may not recall, some of you may recall, I think the mayor does, and at the time, that when PATH Foundation wanted to place their path along CSX right-of-way, along the entire side of Church Street, within CSX right-of-way, and we're talking ten-foot wide, right? Path, right on the back of the curb at Church Street, um, they could not accomplish that. Uh, they had to go to Congress and deal with the U.S. Department of Transportation, DeKalb County chose not to do that. So, that's why Roland Street continues to remain as a path trail. All right, that's how, that, that's that history. So, for us to encroach any more than a foot or two, if even that, beyond the existing curb line, not going to happen. Uh, just not going to happen. Um, so, the second one, crosswalks. Um, with this signal, you're going to have crosswalks on all four approaches, on both sides.
Okay, and so, that, I just don't see that in-
You'll see, yeah, that's the kind of detail that's not-
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
Great.
Okay.
I'll get on any more questions.
All right, thank you. And I guess what would also help, if we could have this rendering on our website and have the information available so that people could see from where we were to where we want to go. And then, that can kind of help answer our, our, you know, a picture tells a story that, you know, just saying the words doesn't make a big difference.
Existing versus proposed.
Right, right. So, that, I think that would be very beneficial, um, cause I know even with the PATH and some of the SPOLOST, um, one, we have photos to show the renderings of what we plan to do. So, if we could do that, so the residents could see, and then that can be a follow-up for us having that public meeting and being able to say, make sure, take a look at it before you come to the meeting. So, if you have additional questions, they'll at least have a, us, a rendering to see.
Understood.
Councilman Yasu? Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions from the, the council? Anyone signed up for this item? No? No, okay. So, your pleasure? Is the consent? Oh, wow.
I, I have a question about consent.
Yes.
If, does this mean that this plan goes forward and commits us in any way? Uh, even before we have a meeting with the public or before we have an opportunity to have, uh, questions answered, et cetera? Is this a-
No, it's just the beginning point. So, this is one document out of many documents that will be sent into Georgia DOT. There's, there's been traffic studies already performed, it's a package of information, and that package includes the concept layout. That concept layout is just the beginning point. All likelihood, there's going to be some tweaks to it by G, GDOT over the next year or two, before we begin acquiring right-of-way. Uh, it's just the beginning point, it's just one piece of information.
So, just keep in mind, this is prob- probably, it is twenty-four months and to, before we even dig a hole in the ground.
Thirty-six months.
Thirty-six months to do that. So, you know, just keeping that in mind, we're just wanting to making sure that people understand. So, it's going to be a while, and I, I think that's another piece that's very important, that we educate our community about, that this is not going to happen overnight. Um, this is going to take, at least, as you said, twenty-four months to just even get all these phases done. And another thirty, and thirty-six months total for us to start doing any type of, of digging in the ground. And so, Councilwoman Bell?
So, I know in the past, thank you, I know in the past that we, when we were trying to seek input from the communities, we put it on the website, and remember, we had a box that kind of was on the site and like, were prompting them to look at it and like, type in the input? I think because this process is going to take too long, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kaiser, but it would be great to be collecting input throughout this whole process. And we already have this firm that has, we've already spent over a hundred thousand dollars on the conceptual design. I wonder if there's one more step that they could do to come up with like, uh, almost a video transformation of where we were to where we're going. Um, I don't know if that's possible, or probably it's not even in the scope of work, but-
Animation, and, and all that is pretty common nowadays.
Mm-hmm.
Um, videography and all that, so, it's not part of the contract. I don't want to say this, that's the best tool, obviously, visual, to see a video of before and after. Um, there's a cost associated with that, I can find out what that cost is, and then I'll come back to council. But I think in the meantime, I think Councilwoman Hood's suggestion, your suggestion of, of actually having before and after,
Yeah, mine too.
Putting that on the website only, Mayor, and, and at least get some early input. In the meantime, I'll research what that cost is.
Mm-hmm.
Because my, Mayor, so my, my thought process, they already have these photos, right? I'm sure they use a drone, they could put it in a B-roll. It don't have to be like a video where they're talking and have back audio, but they could have put a B-roll clip of all of the renderings that they've taken, to illustrate where we came from to where we're going. I don't think that should be substantial, but it could be.
I'll find out.
Um, yeah, let me, let us know.
Yeah, but, yeah, and, and in the meantime, we'll, we'll, we can do with a before and after photos too. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm with you, we can do it. We definitely, if we can do it and it's in budget, go for it. So, any other comments from the council? Anyone from the public? So, Councilwoman Hood, you good as far as this one? This is just a matter of the next steps, and this is just to say we're going to move forward.
Right, based on, uh, Mr. Kaiser's response, that this doesn't restrict us in any way, then, yes, consent agenda would be great.
Okay, outstanding, so we have another one for consent. Thank you all, we're chugging along. So, next, we have to discuss item J, which is to discuss the resolution declaring results of the SPOLOST II election. Interim City Manager Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, pardon me, Dan Defnall, our finance director, will take this one and also the next one.
Okay.
Yes, as we discussed when we did the, um, SPOLOST II referendum, we put in there an option to borrow bond against the future, um, revenue of up to twelve million dollars. Um, this process is the first step. We've been working with the city attorney, our bond attorney, and our financial advisors to come up with the process if we want to do a bond in twenty-twenty-four, so we can get the funding to jumpstart these SPOLOST projects rather than waiting for the revenue to come in a little bit every month. Um, and the first step in that process is to approve the resolution declaring the results of the SPOLOST II election. And then, this will allow the city attorney to proceed with the bond validation process, which must be completed by May the sixth, i- in order to preserve the city's ability to issue bonds later in twenty-twenty-four, if we decide to do that. The next item, we'll talk about the process of trying to determine how much we want to borrow. But this is the first step in that process.
Okay, and this, um, is something that we have done for SPOLOST I.
Yes.
Um, so, this is just a continuation with the SPOLOST II, for the, this will be over the next six years.
Yes.
Okay, and anything else from a legal that we need to be mindful of?
Um, no, not really, I think Mr. Defnall said it pretty well. This is like step one of, of several steps, um, some of which involve votes here, uh, one of which involves a court process. And then, of course, uh, the final step, which our consultants at Davenport will advise you about is, you know, actually putting the bonds out to the market and how you want to offer them and what the offers are. This is all precursor to that, to make it possible.
Okay, council, do you have any questions? Councilman Yasu?
So, I've got a couple of questions. So, is this basically certifying the results?
Yes, so, in order, DeKalb County's election superintendent certified that the SPOLOST passed countywide and provided us with the Clarkston's specific data. Because the SPOLOST will be imposed either countywide or not at all, based on how everyone in the county votes. But in order to approve a bond issuance, you have to look additionally to the vote that occurred only within the municipality. And so, we have that data from DeKalb election superintendent, I believe that's in your packet, that shows how did Clarkston residents vote, and that's what we're confirming.
And how come we're not certifying the overall election results as well?
Because that- Because that function is performed by the DeKalb County election superintendent.
I guess I'm wrong, but I do recall that we did, we did certify some election results. I don't know, it's been a minute, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we took care of that, but this, this is specifically for SPOSS. So that's, that's what we're making sure in terms of certifying this piece. Okay.
Yeah, this, this is only about the SPOSS referendum that occurred in November.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the council?
And because we put in our referendum that we would issue a bond, we have to show that the votes in Clarkston support that.
Right, okay. Do we have anyone signed up for this item? One more? Alright, is this consent? We are on a roll, I'm so proud of you guys.
We're not giving anything to discuss.
Okay. Mr. Dufnall, we'll, we'll proceed with the next item, which is to discuss the list of SPOSS two projects to be considered over the next three years to consider the amount of a potential bond issue.
Yes, as discussed, we put in the referendum to, that we could possibly bond up to twelve million dollars. However, as part of that, if we do issue a bond in 2024, we have to be able to spend those bond proceeds within eighty-five percent of those bond proceeds, within thirty-six months of the bond issue. So, Mr. Kaiser and I have gone through all of our list of proposed projects on this page here and we have identified approximately a little over eight million dollars of proposed projects that we think could be started in the next three years. But, you know, since we haven't done a lot of planning as a city council to approve individual projects, we really need to look at this list and figure out what our priorities should be. We, we bonded, we proposed about three point four million in parks. Most of that stuff can start right away. And then our streets and sidewalks is about four million dollars. We've got two hundred thousand dollars a year for public safety equipment. So that puts us at about eight million. But we really need to, you know, kind of fine tune the projects that we, that we will need to start.
Right, and plus, plus we have those that kinda carried over from when we had the discussion about the L-MIG project as well.
Right.
So, and I see your recommendation for it, more than likely needing to go to the Transportation and Environment Standing Advisory Committee. Council, did you have any other questions about that? Yes, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes. The, I recall that we established percentages in categories for this funding. Can you tell me if the thirty, three million, four hundred thousand, what, what percentage of the money that we determined to be allocated to parks and cultural facilities?
I didn't bring that information with me. I'm thinking twenty percent, I'm thinking maybe.
Yeah, not, not what we earm, not what we sent the, the state saying we're going to put a certain percentage.
This amount is that percentage of the total that we estimated.
So the three million, four hundred thousand is the total amount that we said we would be putting toward parks and recreation?
I believe so, yeah.
And what about the roads?
That would have been a bigger percentage. The, the, the items listed here are only the ones that, that we think could be started and finished over the next three years.
Okay, so, and they have a much larger amount?
Yes.
Yes, especially on the culture, cultural facilities and recreation facilities. I think it would be very important to get the public's input if this proposal, if, if we're going to get about three and a half million dollars, I think for parks improvements, I think it'd be very important to get the public's input on where they would like to see that money spent.
Well, that's, that's why we need to have more in-depth discussions because like I said, this is eight million dollars and that process may take longer of how much time, you know, that we spend planning these to be able to finish in thirty-six months.
Right.
So we may not need to borrow eight million, it may need to be a lower amount to allow the time we need for planning and design and collaboration on what, what those projects will be.
Okay, thank you.
And also, just as a point of reference too, we did have community meetings to get their input for all the items that you see listed. That came from community input meetings that we had. So it, if I'm not mistaken, we did the preliminary part before we even went through the SPOSS two and the election piece. This is more to say, okay, these were the things that were identified because all of those things have amounts associated with them. So it would be kinda hard for us to then turn around and, and add more things when we've already allocated the items, plus made sure they fit within the percentages that we have for each one of the categories. So it's just a matter of going even to the committee to say, we'll take care of these first from the list that we had. And so my only other concern is from taking in consideration is, I know that we looked at a lot of the ADH, ADA ramps and things like that and that might be something down the road that we can take care of or even look at that from an L-MIG perspective. But the list is what we kinda base the categories on, correct?
Right.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. Councilman, Councilman Yasu and then Councilman Carol.
I, I just wanna note that the recommendation is probably we could do it in conjunction. We could do it together with housing and infrastructure because they were, it says or, so we can still do it together, I believe. And I have a question, probably we can discuss this further. Okay, discuss this further at the committees. But I see one of the things listed is Norman Road dam, uh, planning and design in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. And I actually have been to the, to the location and I've spoken to some of the neighbors and they are definitely concerned. And my opinion is, I think we need to consult with somebody who specializes on, engineer who specializes on dam and probably we could discuss this, but we probably might have to add consulting with it, I don't know.
Okay, okay, so, thank you for bringing that point up and Councilman Carol.
So my question is, what is the timing that you need decisions from us on, on lists and bond amounts in order to get started and complete these within the, the thirty-six month period?
Well, I would think within the next couple of months. I mean, if we're gonna do a bond, we need to, like I said, we can move ahead with the validation. We don't have, I don't think we have a fine timeline of when we have to do that. But we have to have it validated by May the sixth. But approving this will allow the city attorney to begin the bond validation process that has to go through the court.
Right, and, and then the, um, the timing of the bond is gonna be related to market conditions and recommendations that you'll get from the financial consultants at Davenport. But there's not... It's gonna be one decision that needs to be made relatively sooner, but not immediately on how much you wanna borrow. And that'll be guided by what projects you wanna do, but you don't necessarily need to be, have that batten down a hundred percent.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Councilman Perkins?
So my recommendation, if we do refer these to committees, one...
Yeah, no, no, every, one committee needs.
Or a committee. Is that, again, we have clear recommendations, a clear ask for that committee. Two, based on, this, this gets into our last agenda item, based on the structure of the resolution that created the committees, the other recommendation, because there's a time crunch on this, is that we have our interim city manager actually make that referral. Council is not able to take action on items referred to committees until they receive a written report. I believe it may be up to ninety days. And so that would be my recommendation as we move forward. Just again, in the interest of keeping with our policies and procedures, so.
Okay, so, and then the only other question I had was, I don't remember Cobble Mill being one of those items on the list of SPOSS.
That's just a proposal to look at. That there is a, that is a two point nine acre parcel.
Okay.
That the city currently owns. It's in the middle of Wild Creek Apartment Complex. It has road frontage and it connects to Friendship Forest.
Okay.
So it, it's gonna be, also connects to the Greenway Path. So it is a potential park space that we would propose we look at.
Okay, perfect.
So that's on the north side of East Ponce de Leon. And it, like I said, it's got road access within Wild Creek Apartments and it connects to Friendship Forest and the creek runs through the middle of that three acre parcel.
Okay, perfect, so, thank you. So with that, council, do you want this to go to the Transportation and Environment Committee? Or would you prefer to go to the Housing and Infrastructure Committee?
The reason I said in conjunction is because it kind of intersects and...
I'm fine with a joint meeting, I'm on both committees, so I'll be there.
Thank you.
I know, we were trying to avoid doing those joint meetings too. That was one of the things that we talked about.
Since I'm on both, I don't think we'll have a call unless.
Yeah, we will have, come on.
Three?
Hmm?
But it's a special call.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Bell.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, might as well make a special call.
Yep, so if you wanna have conjoint, joint meetings, we can do the joint meeting. Is that the pleasure of the council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm, okay, alright, so we're gonna work together, alright. And so with that, the, yes, Councilwoman Bell?
Okay, so we need to call a special call within a timeframe because this always becomes our hill that we dial. Right, we, we delay and delay for this process, so.
So can we, can we have this in the next week or two? Can we, can we do this within the next two weeks?
I think sometime in March.
Can we say before, before?
After, you wanna do it after, we have the retreat on the fifteenth, so do you wanna do it after we come back from the retreat?
I think before April.
Okay, so you're gonna do it before April? Okay, alright, perfect, so you'll do it before April. And yes, Councilwoman Bell?
Is there enough time for the city attorney and Mr. Dan for the validation part? Cause I know it's due by May fourth, right? Or May sixth, what'd you say?
The number.
Yeah, May sixth. But they had a committee meeting.
The validation is different.
They still gonna have to do the recommendations and.
We, we don't need the project list to validate.
Oh, okay, got it.
You just need, do you need a number? Do you need a, okay, so you just, we're good as far as?
Well, I don't know, it could be, I'll, I'll double check.
Okay, so if you can confirm, then let us know by the next council meeting. So if we need to make any changes in terms of direction for the two committees, then we can let them know to make sure that we meet your deadline. Cause we, we don't wanna put you up against the wall trying to make sure that you get this done.
Right.
Okay, okay, is that fine for everyone? Okay, good, alright. Any discussion? So we can move this to consent to be, to go to the two committees?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that fine? For a special call meeting? We're good, alright. So this is another one. Two committees, alright. So the next one is to discuss late night operation hours for certain restaurants. Councilman Yasu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if we recall, in twenty nineteen, the city council heard from businesses and some residents and about the need for services for individuals with odd workers or odd shifts such as Uber drivers, truckers, nurses and others who work late and wanted to get something to eat or something to drink. They could not access restaurants late night. So the council proposed and came up with a, with a resolution and additional, two additional hours were approved with strict requirements including having an off-duty police officer presence starting from eleven PM to closing time. And we decided that we can have Clarkston Police or DeKalb County Police Officers only to be, to work as off-duty in those, in such locations to make sure that they had the power to arrest if somebody's creating troubles. And also to add another layer of safety. So one of the businesses that applied for this program was Ponce Sports Lounge. And since the reversion of the extra two hours in twenty twenty-one, the establishment reported to the council that they have experienced major losses of revenue and have difficulty with employee retention. Also reported that there has been a decline and, and we saw that there has been decline in their federal, state and local city excise tax amounts. So this is a proposal to, to, to explore the possibility of extending the operation hours with similar stringent requirements. And I have Councilmember Bell, if she wanna add something to this.
Yeah, so what I'll say is that I requested all of any complaints for this particular restaurant that is dealing with the hardship that they have acknowledged to us and reduce, and as it relates to reduce, reduction of wages, the retention and then the taxes for the city. And so what I saw was that from two thousand nineteen to current, there have, there have not been any incidents as it relates to this establishment since twenty twenty-one, right? So that's about three years and no incidents. I think that, I also, and I, I have a question, is it, is it okay? Are we at the point where I can ask questions? Is the compliance director on the call? Is she on there or Lisa?
Good evening, council members.
Yes.
Ms. Smith, are you, are you on the call? Okay, so just to answer your question, I wasn't here, but the information that I received, we did do research. And according to the reports, there was complaints about noise and complaints about, there was a couple of complaints that I've seen in the report about storage, outdoor storage. And, and in those reports, they were, those reports was, they, they came into compliance around twenty twenty-one. Upon my further research, I, I talked with a few of the officers, especially last week when we were having, or week before last when we had filming going on. And I, I spoke with the one, I think one officer that comes to my mind is Officer Priest, I believe his name is. And he confirmed with me that we have not had any complaints at that location since twenty, about twenty twenty-one. Is what he's.
Yes.
Okay, so I have a few questions, I know Lisa, you may not be able to answer because you haven't been with the city through, out the full duration of the incidents that have occurred.
Yes.
But I wanna know, as it relates to the incidents that you've seen and been able to review, were those from a diversified list of individuals that made complaints or was it?
No, it was, it was the same.
Okay, and, and then the other question that I have, and, and thank you for bringing the noise ordinance here, but does this noise ordinance have any oversight to restaurants?
No, that was the other thing that I, I looked at the zoning ordinance and, and what you have before you is three different sections of noise. The main one that you'll see is article about noise. It talks about noise, you know, happening in the city, but it doesn't refer to any, you know, opening up a door or, you know, music, noise coming out of a building. Of course, you know, we, we have a nuisance ordinance as well, but it doesn't refer to sounds coming from a lounge or a restaurant or anything like that.
May I proceed?
Yeah, go ahead.
So it seems to me that the council made a determination, reduce the hours, but it was based off of the complaint from. but it was based off of the complaint from one individual over a series of time. And there's no ordinance that complies with the sanction that was provided. Uh as well as, I've been to the actual establishment and realized that when they have music inside, you cannot hear it outside, but there is establishments around it. And it could have been, you know, just due to their fault that, that the noise, cause this is noise that we're referring to, could have came from those other establishments.
Absolutely, so uh upon my, my research, when I got the information, I also went to this location. There is a, a gas station and when I was, I, I, there's a gas station and there's also, uh from the complaint, there's a house opposite of the um, the establishment. And there is a, between, between the house, there is a driveway that is about twenty four feet wide. Um there, there are condominiums behind that property. Um and then there's a gas station on the side of it. So when I was there and I was doing investigation, of course, people were getting gas. And one of the things that got me was, you know, someone got out of vehicle, the music was loud and you can hear, actually hear the music. I was, I was on the street and I just, I took different photos as well. Um so um I wasn't here, I don't know exactly where, where the noise, that, you know, the complaint said the noise came from the club. And it was um, it was at night, that was the other thing that we observed.
Well, let's stop one thing, is we don't have clubs and we don't have lounges.
Okay.
So if we're gonna say what we're gonna say, we're gonna have to use the right terminology.
Okay, okay, all right. Um the lounge is, is.
No, it's a, no.
It's a restaurant.
It's a restaurant, okay, it's a restaurant, okay. And I was just going by the name that's on the, on the organization.
Okay, okay, so what I wanna make sure is, we have eight minutes left, any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I would like to clear up some, some, if you don't mind, Councilwoman Bell. The reason we um revoke this back in June of twenty twenty one was not solely because of the noise. It was the fact that it was a bona fide restaurant and bona fide restaurants being open till four AM and causing noise and other criminal acts that were going on. We were just trying to make sure that we were living up to our charter and not allowing restaurants to conduct themselves by having late night hours being restaurants. So it was a factor of things and we have councilmen that, well, we have people on council that can actually vouch that we actually walked and heard noise coming from some establishments. But I did not know when we came here tonight that this was a ordinance just for one restaurant. Um because you called out a restaurant, so I wanted to be clear with that. Now what I did is I did talk to that restaurant owner and my concern was the losses as a result of COVID. And we did allow convenience stores the opportunity to stay open later to service our community. I don't see a need for a restaurant at four AM if we're trying to uphold our charter and not in giving people lead way to be lounges, nightclubs or anything like that. So in order, seeing that I am the one that pulled it, I need to be persuaded that what we're doing is not for one person and not to just go around our charter.
Madam Mayor, can I say something?
Sure.
All right, so the proposal is gonna be the same, just like, it's gonna be the same ordinance we passed the last time. So it's not gonna be for a specific restaurant, but the restaurants will have to apply and they will have to comply with all existing laws of, obviously, including the quotas or including the reporting and everything that any restaurant has to abide with. And I, thi- this is specifically um, um adding two more hours. Um and uh, uh specifically Sunday to um, to Thursdays. And on Friday, it's only one more hour. And, no, no, I'm sorry, Friday is also the same thing, but Saturday is just gonna add one more hour only. Um and um, it's not gonna be just for one restaurant, but whichever restaurant that will utilize this must have a police officer. They must have um all the other requirements that actually they have to abide by, all the other requirements as well. Obviously, that restaurant abides with. And I really doubt that restaurants are limited by hours, but the only uh di- dimension that limiting them is the alcohol hours, Ma- Ma- Madam Vice Mayor. So uh all we're doing is we adding extra hour for, for the businesses to serve alcohol. That's the, the, the one, the part that we are actually extending. Other than that, restaurants, and our city attorney can correct me on this, technically can operate twenty four hours if they're not selling alcohol. Am I wrong on that?
I believe that under our current code of ordinances, it states a time when every business must close. Now, I can't recall what that time is, I think it might be two AM.
Mm-hmm.
Um and then, of course, we did have, you know, I've actually seen this go back and forth, I think, at least three times, if not four. Um but obviously, I recall what uh Councilman Yasu described, that we had this special late night establishment um paradigm.
Councilman Carol.
So I'll, I'll just be brief, cause I know we're coming up on the time limit. But my recollection is that most of the externalities are not really inflicted by the restaurants themselves, cause then, like people said, the noise doesn't come out. The problem is really cars that are outside that are making noise and maybe some of those are going to the restaurants, maybe some of them aren't. My suggestion is if the concern is, you know, the noise and externalities, to actually do enforcement on the cars. And there are some cities that even have like automated noise detection that can give you first a warning and then a ticket if you go above a certain decibel level, either with your engine or with the music that's coming out of your car. So I was thinking that may be a solution that would let the restaurants continue to stay open, but at the same time making sure the neighbors aren't bothered by the noise. That's all.
Okay, thank you, and we'll bring uh Mr. Jimmy up, come on up, Jimmy. No, this is more so.
To answer our question.
Just to answer the question. And we'll let Mr. Marcus, we have you. No. Yes. Any questions for Mr. uh Jimmy?
Okay, I, I wanna state something.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for giving me an opportunity to come back and uh regret for this situation since uh two thousand nineteen, we've been given special hours oppression to stay open, extra two hours, and we've been doing that uh till two thousand twenty one, when we have city manager change. And then we got investigation notice from the city manager to uh our operations. Uh without we being gate citation from the police or without getting any uh wrongly doing, we got investigated. I got investigated, I don't know if another uh establishment got investigated. I asked the city, I couldn't get no answer, so I don't know the reason why. And then all of a sudden, uh these uh to retake the hour back came in May, uh in, I would say in July. And we only get one month of notification and took the hour, special hours uh on July, on August first. Since from that day to end of twenty twenty three, we becoming not almost unoperational. We can get, we can get no employees because they come in there, there's no enough employee for business. And most of the, our customers that live in our city work late night. And when they come out, they come to our restaurant to eat, to drink for that certain hours. And that's how we've been surviving. And if it's not that surviving point, I'm not gonna stand here asking you anything. But that's the only crucial point. And we do have uh, uh establishment that stayed in Clarkston at four, until four AM, so.
So, thank you, Jimmy, a couple of points. Um when you were asked for that information, it was done for every establishment that had an alcohol license. So I just wanna make sure it wasn't something where you were singled out. Um cause you mentioned that piece. Um it was done for every establishment that had alcohol to ensure that the establishments were in compliance.
Yes, but what I was saying is, there was no wrongdoing that the city find, that's what I'm trying to uh saying. Because on the paper, nobody give us, that's what you're doing wrong. It's just saying sound, 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 just nothing else came that. And then, just, just to tell you that we have rail, rail, railroad that operating from two AM to four thirty AM in the morning. You can't go in there, see it this, tonight if you want to, this morning. A pass or a blow a horn and the whole entire city will shake. My establishment shake. So even though that, it's not a problem for the resident who complained since right there next to the road, right there behind the highway, right there behind the gas station.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh Count, uh Vice Mayor Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Um Jimmy, I wanted to ask you a question. You stated that once we changed these hours in twenty one, that you had a decrease in sales, employment, everything. So these two hours have impacted your business that bad that it's a, it's really affecting your business to the point where if we give you these two hours back, you feel that you will be able to regain your clientele?
We have evidence that we regain our uh, uh, uh businesses when we get hours, because we have paper, we pay taxes and everything is on paper. So everybody, everybody can see that. So I can provide that, if anybody wanted the tax paper that you wanted, I can provide to you. You can see the losses and you can see the gains, you can see before, the gains, losses and you can see after the effect of the hour taken losses.
And those losses and gains will reflect the fifty one forty nine rule for food and alcohol sales?
Yes, that's, we have to do by force.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Ten.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Um city manager, do we have the quarterly's on these restaurants in the city?
Yes, there are um, one, two, three, four, five locations. And we do have uh the quarterly report for Ponce Sports Lounge. Uh however, there are at least two of them that have not reported.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh any other questions?
I have another one. So if you're granted these two hours, do you have parking accommodations?
Yes, we already submitted to the city where we park our customers.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, yes, Councilwoman Bell.
And just so I'm clear around the parking, that was a parking agreement sign, right? With the establishments down the street a little bit or did that, was that ever confirmed?
Yes, they confirmed it and then we have it to the city archive and I have a copy of it, my consent with everybody until twenty twenty five. So that can be renewed on twenty twenty five, but we are working on it permanently to get a parking lot there.
So, so you're saying you have an outdoor monitor for parking?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Jimmy?
I just wanna ask him also, do you have any uh noise blockers in your establishment?
We took out our speakers entirely and then we put acoustics to the wall. And you can go and stand whatever day you wanted, time you wanted, you cannot hear anything from our establishment.
Okay, any other questions? Yes.
One last question, so Jimmy, I know you've been operating in the city for quite some time, but due to some of the constraints and some of the agreements that you've had to create with the parking, is there any desire to, to relocate?
Uh, I tried it, uh the former uh city manager to, to do that, but uh there's no space for that, for us to do anything like that. We tried, we tried to just make sure everybody's satisfied, we tried what we doing, so.
All right, thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you very much.
All right, did we have anyone signed up for this item? And we, and then I'm, and we're gonna adhere to the time for this.
Yes, we have three.
Three, okay.
The first one is uh Michael Marcus.
Marcus, Mr. Marcus.
Okay, the second one is M.D. Rashid. The third one, I do not know how to say it, but I can spell it, it starts with a T, the first name, and then the last name is W E G U Y E L.
That's him, that's.
That's Jimmy, okay.
Oh, that's, oh, that was him, okay, great, thank you.
All right, Mr. Marcus.
All right, thank you. Um, so I guess I'll have three minutes, but you know, Jimmy, in representation of all the restaurants in Clarkston, not lounges, not bars. Um, is this on, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um seems to have taken like, what, fifteen minutes? Not, not that everybody cared, but um, there is so much to unpack there that is just, first of all, I don't understand why Mr. Yasu hasn't recused himself uh given his uh personal relationship with Jimmy, that I know about, because that's what he told me in two thousand nineteen, when you came to discuss it with me personally. Okay, so I know that.
Personal relationship?
Yes, personal relationship with Jimmy.
Okay, so.
You're, you're, it's a friend.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So, so that's one thing. Um, second, um, the name lounge is in the name. It's a lounge, it's not a restaurant, okay? Most of the food business comes from delivery, okay? With, with things like um, uh drop hop, DoorDash, et cetera, those services. Now, the liquor license, you know, the, the whole thing with the fifty one percent food or not, uh the, the, uh, okay, there are, the, the requirements for the, for the liquor license uh talk about consumption on premises, so if it's consumption on premises of liquor, then it would be consumption on premises of food. And uh I would challenge anybody to find that fifty one percent uh of the food is all consumed on premises. I, I would challenge anybody and I would bet everything is, or the vast majority of the food is all delivered. Um the business is what's called, DoorDash calls uh an overlay restaurant. It's called AJ's Kitchen at Ponce Sports Lounge, lounge, not restaurant. Um, uh, and it's almost like a separate business, okay? So let's, let's be clear, sure, there was one complaint, that's me. Okay, so you could have just pointed in my direction, it's fine, you know, we know who it is. But I happen to be the, the one who lives across from the bar. And I will call it a bar, because that's what it is. No restaurant, no bona fide restaurant needs to be open until four AM in order to survive. That's unheard of. Restaurants are, they're, they sell liquor usually in conjunction with a meal. Either you have it with a meal or maybe you sit at a bar and have a cocktail before your meal. But that, that's what it is, is, that's the whole purpose, is in conjunction with a meal, okay? That does not require being open until four AM. Um, I would be willing to bet that, that, you know, the, the vast majority of customers are not Uber drivers and so on. Um, they, they, you know, it's, so to me, it's, it's pretty clear, this is, this is not a restaurant. Anybody who, who thinks it is, uh either is doing that, saying that in bad faith or um doesn't understand how restaurants work. So, um, I, I would challenge anybody who just, who, who, to, to go have lunch there or breakfast. There is no one there I know because I live across the street. There's no one there until like midnight, okay? That's when, when the business starts, what kind of restaurant is that? I, I sent to this council data, not my data, independent data that showed where the, the visits to the, to the, the lounge came. And, and since, you know, whether, I know we, we talk about uh late night operation hours for certain restaurants plural, but let's face it, we're only talking about one place and that's, that's, that's kind of strange that we would make a resolution and a um, a um, and we'll consider an ordinance for one place.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Marcus.
So, uh the last thing I will say, and I know I exceeded my time, but let's face it, uh I'm, I, I think uh, given certain. I, I think, uh, given certain things that were being said, I think I need to be able to respond. Yes, I, I'm not getting awakened by the, by the train. It passes every now and then and, but it's not like a constant vroom, vroom, vroom.
Right.
Which lasts hours, that's different, okay?
So, Mr. Marcus, I appreciate all that you're saying. Um, the question's more so because Jimmy was a restaurant that was being impacted.
It's not a restaurant, and what I'm saying is, if this council was honest about it,
Mm-hmm.
it does not fit the requirements for a bona fide restaurant. So I want to be very clear because, you know, we seem to have a trouble, some confusion with that term, which is in our ordinances. And you all swore an oath to uphold the city ordinances, and if you're not doing that, I don't know what you're doing. Um, but if, just to be clear, it's that if, if this is done again, okay? Um, I will go the legal route. I will contact the media.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I will actually take legal action, not just against, you know, whoever is impacting my life.
Okay.
Just, just to work here.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus.
Okay.
Thank you. Who else did we have signed up? M D Rashid? Are, are you, you're doing the next item. You, you're not on this one. Okay, not this one.
I'm just, um, translating for him.
Right, it's, it's for the co- co- the next gen item, okay. Oh, that's his. Oh no, this is the co- this is Coan.
Yeah, it's the Coan.
Okay, yes. Okay, yes, so we'll go ahead and do this.
Yeah, my name is Ken Kautius, thank you for having me. Um, there is a culture, there's associated with people who work late or work early and they get off of work late. They need the place to eat too, you know, and so um, some people call it nightlife. Some of us call it employment. That's how we feed our families. Uh, been a part of the Ponce family for, for close to five years. Um, had a short stint in management. Also ran head of security. Worked alongside of Clarkston's finest as well as de cab. So, the safety of Clarkston citizens is very important to me. I protected many of them, many nights, um, in the establishment. When the hours were cut, so was food from my table. Because we had to cut, you know, when the budget goes down, I mean, it affects everything. Two hours, it was a question asked, will two hours make a difference? It certainly does because there are certain people who come out late. There's a culture associated with people who come out late. And so, in regards to the noise and complaints, I can tell you personally, there are two doors in the back of the establishment. We close one door, there's a gap, and we close the other door. And that is specifically to compress the sound. There are many days that Jimmy and myself, we will go outside and I will walk all the way to the gentleman's driveway in the middle of the street to make sure that we're in compliance and not causing noise. There's an establishment, there's a gas station, and there's a residence between the gentleman's house. Nobody else is complaining. Nobody else is making the complaints and all due respect. All due respect. We have been in compliance. We haven't had any incidents of that nature. So, I would request strongly consider what we're asking for. Because not only does it affect business hours, it affects everything. It affects the livelihood of Clarkston. I believe in it so much, I drive all the way from Douglasville to come to this establishment, to this city every night. And so, thank you for my time.
Okay, and please state your name again.
Ken Kautius.
Okay, can you spell your last name?
K A U T I O U S.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
She couldn't speak. Okay, that's why. Okay. All right, so we're gonna have one or two more questions and then that will conclude in terms of this. So, Councilman Yasu.
I just wanna, because since my name was mentioned, I just wanna mention that I represent a major portion of the East African community. And Jimmy happened to be an East African and I'm proud to support all the East African communities that has supported me, that has voted for me, and I'm not ashamed of supporting them. I'm not ashamed of supporting them and they come to us, they're business owners, they're low-abiding citizens. And Jimmy's one of them. And I've known him for years and I'm not lying that I've known him. But I don't have any business association with him and I'm not gonna accuse myself of representing my community, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Council, uh, Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, um, am I correct, this has been stated before, but I wanna make sure I have it correct. That this ordinance will apply to any restaurant with an alcohol license.
Correct.
And so, although we, uh, most of the restaurants in Clarkston are not requesting this, there is nothing to say that, that will not change in the future. And so, I think it's important for us to keep that in mind, that when we enact regulations, it is not just for what is happening today, but what could happen in the future. And, um, having all restaurants in Clarkston stay open till four o'clock, I, I believe is a concern for our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I take this item.
Can I be on? Can I clarify something?
Councilman Yasu, I let you talk a lot. What, what is it that you have to clarify?
Because it's actually restaurants with alcohol license. I mean, that sell alcohol and they have strict requirement, including having an off-duty police officer. Other restaurants are not required, madam, madam council member.
But that's what she's trying to say. She's saying, she said the exact same thing, Councilman Yasu. And it's not to even belabor the point. What she's just trying to reiterate is that what we do today impacts decisions our other places tomorrow. Because in fact, when we even did it the first time, some of the issues that we had with some other establishments weren't there at the time. So, so that's the, that's a perfect example of exactly what she's talking about. So, we're taking all this information that we receive and we, and the council at, will make a decision next week. And I know this is not gonna be on consent agenda. So we can just go ahead and whatever decision the council wants to make on Tuesday, make that decision on Tuesday and we go from there. Okay? Okay? Yes, yes.
We have one more person online that wants to speak.
Online?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Amina Austin.
Okay. Ms. Amina.
Call for her now.
Amina? Okay, there she is. I see your hand. Go ahead, Ms. Amina. Ms. Amina, you can speak, you can speak now.
Is she muted? She's muted.
She's, can you unmute her? I see the mute button on the bottom. Amina, we're gonna need for you to unmute yourself.
In the meantime, Ken, go ahead, uh, Mr. Quinn.
Mr. Quinn, did you have something to say?
I had a question. Do I understand correctly that what the council, and I'm asking Mr. Yasu mostly since he's the sponsor, what you want to put to a vote on next week is the exact same late night ordinance that we previously had?
It's exactly the same, just change of day, the years.
Understood. Thank you.
Ms. Amina, you on, she's still on mute. Okay, we're gonna give one more shot. Ms. Amina.
We can't force a blind meter. She's.
We can't do it, so, okay.
Do you need that ordinance, Mr. Quinn?
Oh, no.
He has it, he has it quite well. Okay, so, we're, we're unable to hear her, um, and we'll, we'll have to go ahead and proceed.
Unmute her.
She has to unmute herself.
She has unmute?
It's not on our side.
It's, yeah, it's, uh, webinar functions, but she has to unmute. I've sent her a request to unmute and she has not.
Okay, okay, so we're, we're just gonna have to go ahead. Okay, thank you all, and so we'll have this as a regular agenda item for next week. And thanks to everyone who came out in support or however you view this particular item. Thank you for your participation. So we'll move on to item M, which is to discuss amending the COAM licenses distance requirement nearer school, daycare, and/or after-school location. Uh, Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we all have, um, experienced, um, on several occasions the concern that our COAM, COAM license, um, owners have in the city. So we, um, I asked the city attorney to do some research for us and we did come up with, um, the fact that we are currently at two hundred yards from property line to property line on our COAM license. And, um, we wanted to discuss tonight if we could make this modification to our COAM distance in the school area only. Um, everyone, there is no one else in our city that is affected as much as one street has been affected by the COAM distance. So, I wanted to bring this to council to see if they would want to look into this and make a recommendation tonight.
And so what's the distance that you are looking to recommending to change?
Right now, according to what we found in our research, one hundred yards door to door. Um, in the school area only, near a daycare, um, school, um, daycare school and/or after-school location, one hundred yards door to door.
Door to door.
Door to door.
Okay. And, uh, Councilman Yasu, Councilman Carol.
I just wanna add that, um, I really appreciate you, Councilmember Johnson, for considering this. Well, Vice Mayor Johnson, yes. Um, and I just wanna mention that there's only one school that is, um, that is, uh, in the city right now currently, um, and, uh, um, within the city limit. And it's big, it's extremely big. And some of the businesses don't even really come close to the door, but just because they are too, they're close to their boundaries, they've been impacted by this. And, um, as we know it, that, um, I really am not sure if, uh, COAM machines are the same as alcohol. And, um, uh, as a matter of fact, COAM actually is one of the, the ways Georgia Lawery supports our schools ironically. So, I think the hundred feet, uh, is feasible to me. Yeah, hundred yards, I'm sorry. Yeah, hundred yards is feasible to me. Thank you.
And just keep in mind, that is schools, daycare centers, and after-school programs.
Yes.
Because we've slept on those, but they are everywhere. So they would apply.
Uh, so does our ordinance include, uh, daycare centers as well? I want, I want to hear our city attorney.
I don't think it's, have daycares in there.
I don't, I don't see daycares, but I do see churches, library, and schools, school grounds.
Any churches and schools.
Yeah, so, so one of the things we're talking about is the distinction between the school and the school grounds.
Mm-hmm.
So the vice mayor was saying that the proposal is to eliminate the school grounds and just have it measured to the school. I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that our, I'm, I'm looking right now for the part about, uh.
Where's the daycare?
I don't see. Yeah, I'm not see, I'm not seeing daycare either. So, and, and I've looked at this before, the term school in this context means K through twelve and it means, uh, colleges. It does not mean daycare.
Did you want daycare or did you not want daycare? Since we're looking at the verbiage.
Well, if we were doing daycares, half of them would, I'm sorry, they wouldn't have them anyway. But if we, if it's not there, I, I can live with that.
I just don't want these people inconvenienced the way that they have been because our current verbiage is not specific. It actually gives you the flexibility to do door to door or property to property, depending on if it's alcohol, church, this or that. So I wanted to have something that was a little more cut and dry.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that way, I thought it was just a hundred yards, door to door, and then where it says school, just put it there.
Okay.
It doesn't have to say daycare, after-school.
Councilman Carol.
So I guess my question is just, what is the state, is there a state minimum that we have to comply with and what, what is that?
At least, oh, I'm sorry, Stephen.
Uh, go ahead, let's say, yeah, on this one, let Stephen take it away.
Uh, um, my belief and understanding is that the state totally leaves this to the local government. And.
Can't mandate COAM more than alcohol.
Right. So, y- you can make COAM distances up to as strict as your packaged alcohol distances. You can make them less strict, but not more.
You can't make them stricter.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, that was my question.
And currently, we have them, I believe the same.
This is same, it's the same. It is the same.
Yeah.
Um, Councilwoman Bell.
Yeah, so I, I, um, I agree with the proposal that is before us in regards to the hundred yards from door to door. Um, I know that we're talking generalizing, generalization around all the COAMs throughout the city, specifically those that are by, uh, these churches or schools or daycares, as we're gonna, uh, amend the language to say. Um, but I also know that we haven't had any incidents and I wanna bring us to the attention of the letter that we have before us as well as information that has been given to us beforehand. These individuals have had a license that has been, um, administered and provided to by the city for several years.
Mm-hmm.
And so now, I think that, you know, to go back on or hold them accountable to something that we haven't had them held accountable to before, I think it's a hardship on them. And I, as a city, I know we definitely do not want to do that. And so I definitely agree with removing the yardage to the hundred yards from door to door.
Okay. So, just as a clarifying, are we saying schools or are we including daycares, just school?
I don't think we changed the rhetoric in the current.
Okay.
But I think we just changed the distance, we don't change the definition of it.
Right. Exactly. We're just inter- intersecting one hundred yards where there's two hundred right now.
Art about school grounds.
Yes.
Just door to door.
Just door to door. Yes, Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, thank you. Um, I think it would be helpful if we got more specific in this ordinance. Um, about how we're going to measure everything. Not just the door to door, but, you know, the hundred yards relative to the, uh, edge of a park. How are we, the park is not gonna have a door. Um, I also think we need to change it from the entrance of any church to include any religious establishment. And, um, so that there, so that this is much, much more defined. And when people go out there to measure or be measured, that it's very clear what this says. And also, um, if a daycare, we do have a situation where a daycare is operated by a church, I believe. And so where would that fall relative to the church or a daycare operated by a church?
So, it would just, only its church aspect is relevant? Um, I agree with your suggestion, Ms. Hood. We do have in the code, uh, a section that describes exactly how to measure, but it's in the alcohol chapter. And, um, and I had spoke with, uh, Ms. Cameron and Ms. Satter Jones about importing that to this chapter as well, just to make it clear.
Okay.
Um, I also think that. That was my main suggestion, but I think I had one other.
I agree with not giving a church separate treatment.
Yeah, well, I think changing the word "church" to "religious", um, place of, place of, place of worship. Because a, a religious institution could be really more like an office.
Okay.
Yeah, place of worship, and... I think those are the main things, is, uh...
So let me make sure we're clear. We're, we're only doing a hundred yards door-to-door with schools, having places of worship, and you're gonna take the distance information that's in the alcohol and use it specifically here for, um, COAM, for measurements. Is there anything else?
I have a question about that.
Yes, Vice Mayor Johnson.
So, so, Mr. Quinn, just to be clear, um, when it comes to alcohol, I think alcohol is specific as to how you do it. So we're gonna put that in here for COAM as well, so there's no confusion.
Correct, exactly the same.
But where it speaks about schools, it would be the hundred yards door-to-door.
Well, we'll need to change, it, when we remove the... The method of measurement will remain the same, but you'll just keep going, because you won't be measuring to the grounds, you'll be measuring to the building. And, uh, the me, the distance measurement protocol section talks about that you should stop at the property line or the grounds or the entrance, whichever is appropriate. So I think that language still works. Uh, oh, here's the other question I wanted to ask. Do, do we want to change these same rules for alcohol? And, and keep in mind that we already have a prohibition on new alcohol licenses, so there's not really a need to.
Right.
Kinda answered my own question there.
Yeah.
If it's not broke, if it's not a problem, we're not gonna fix it.
Yeah.
But, but I was looking for, that was one of the questions I had, I'm sorry, Watie. Consistency. We need to be consistent with whatever form of measurement, so that if we have a new compliance officer, there's no confusion on that, or they don't get to pick and choose. I think that's where the problem came in with all of this in the first place, is that they were... The verbiage actually says, depending on the situation, whatever fits the need best, and they were measuring one address one way and another another way. So if we could get some consistency, that would be super great.
Yeah, I, I'll dive into that and try to, if there's a way to clarify it, I, I will.
I think that's the biggest thing, is that, you know, we just wanna make sure in terms of equity, everybody's measured the same way, not, you know, grounds, door, parcel. And so if we can make sure that, as you're looking at the language, to ensure that it consistently says "door-to-door", 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 and then that way, I think for the business owners or anyone else, um, when they have to engage with us, um, it's consistent, and to the point, we hired a new code enforcement person, so that person should be able to understand the same thing as anyone else, as they, they're documenting this stuff to our, um, our businesses when they do their, um, inspections, so...
Are, are you telling me, Madam Mayor, that you want them all to be measured door-to-door? Cause for instance, if you look at single-family residents...
Property line.
Property, property line, no, just the, the school. The school is the only one, it's the school is the only one.
That's what I already wrote down, so I'm set.
That's right. But you did say, Stephen.
And change the religious institution, oh, that's all.
Place of worship.
But you did state that you were looking to do something with all of it?
If there's a way that I think of to express the existing measurement rules better, then I'll do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and Council, Councilwoman Bell?
My question was around the consistency of the measurement, um, and like figuring out what's the best practices from the cities that are around us, because I think that this is how we got here, right? We piecemeal some of these things, and we change them as we go, and like, there needs to be an overhaul of a lot of these ordinances and a lot of our charter, cause it's not consistent across the board. And so I don't know if that's a departmental focus, or that's a legal focus, but we're always gonna end up here, because there is no consistency in what we've written, and according to who's here politically, right? Those changes have been made, and then I think it's a level of education that also has to happen with any of the new staffers that we get on board, to be able to interpret this how we would like to perceive it.
Yeah, yep, so I, I think we're all in agreement, saying we got the same message, so we're gonna march to the same order and make the necessary changes, okay?
Yes.
I think the difference in what I'm saying and what the Vice Mayor said is that they need to be consistent across the board for all of these, and we have to stop ad hocly making amendments to things that are already on the board, and making sure that the staff that execute on writing citations or whatever the case may be, understand where we want them to start measuring, so that we don't have to get back here ever again.
Okay, perfect, all right, anything else?
My other suggestion is...
Yes.
I recommend that we make part of the COAM for a new license, the first time, make it part of the application, that the applicant submit a survey, and that that survey
That's what it was.
Shows the measurement and how they did it, and it's stamped by a surveyor. And they are in the business of doing this, it's done for alcohol licenses all the time, and I think that would, number one, take some of the burden off our staff, and number two, give us a, um, credible source of information where we're just kinda double-checking it.
Right, may I? And, and I did speak to City Manager Jones about that same, um, thing, but what our question was, Mr. Quinn, is can we say how, how we're gonna require them to have a thousand-dollar survey every year? Because COAM is not renewable, or can we put a timeframe on it, five to ten years, two to three years? But it's a thousand dollars.
I think it would just be the first time.
They said the first time.
Yeah.
Oh, just the first time.
Only, only for a first time, because after that, you would be testing to see if any new, um, church, school, et cetera, had moved in, and they would be grandfathered.
So at that point, that would be a part of the application process, and we can always...
I mean, the license only lasts one year, but it is a renewal license, and so it'd only be for first-timers. I don't know if it would really cost a thousand dollars or not, but, um, I, I, I think, I don't know.
Okay, and so, so Councilman Perkins, thank you, everyone, Councilman Perkins.
Thank you. So I just wanted to be clear, cause my understanding of the situation was, we had an individual business who was measured one way in previous years, and then was measured another, and the key there being, one, you know, previously it was measured door-to-door, and then it was measured property line to property line and door-to-property line. And so what I'm a little unclear on, um, you know, first, the, the, you know, COAM is a, is a complicated subject. While it does fund education, um, we also have to have to get, ask the question, who's funding the education? And where's that funding coming from? And as a community where the, you know, household median income, the average house, median income per household is, is forty thousand dollars, you know, we have a lot of, um, factors that make our constituents vulnerable, um, economically, socially, in terms of education, and everything else. And so, um, while I am very much in favor of consistency, I, I also look at this from, from a different angle as well, of making sure that we are not opening a door up that could, you know, potentially negatively impact our community in other ways. Um, and so, uh, do we know if we were to change the, the footage versus just clarifying the measurement, the impact on other businesses being able to open? As well, was that, I, I missed that, and I don't know if I missed that, or if that was a part of y'all's initial question, or research?
You said what?
Vice Mayor.
What was the last part?
Did, did you, have y'all looked to see what other, like, other areas this would impact in terms of new licenses being?
No, that's, we only have one area where there is a school.
We just mentioned daycares and places of worship.
Well, well, we did, we're not gonna modify that.
Okay, we're not gonna modify it, okay, specifically, okay.
Place of worship is just gonna be changing the terminology.
I understand that part, I was just, there, there's a conversation on daycares as well, being considered schools.
Yeah, I thought that the definition, I read, and I may have been under a different, you know how you go to a section, and it sends you somewhere else? I may have pulled that from somewhere else in my research. I thought all of it was together, so when I did it, I put daycares, after-school, and schools.
Okay, I got you.
And, um, Mr. Quinn cleared that up for me.
Okay.
Where we say school is pre-K to twelfth grade, or college, only.
Are, are we okay for consent, assuming we make these changes?
Well, we're gonna let Ms., um, Mark get his questions out, and we'll see.
Sorry, did you have something else?
Uh, yeah, I would like to, I mean, I'm okay with, with consent, but I would like to see, uh, I would move that we pull it off consent if we don't have some really clear guidelines to vote on.
Guidelines, what?
In terms of what we suggested for city, or, um, planning and zoning director and other staff to kind of think the criteria, are we trying to do that this meeting, or are we just trying to make this one modification?
We're making this modification. Yeah, it's just a hundred from two, we're changing the two to one, that's it.
Okay, I understand that part.
Now the rest of that and door-to-doors.
Right.
Okay.
Removing the school grounds, and instead going with the school building, which measures to the door.
Correct.
Reducing the number from two hundred yards to one hundred yards. Adding the measurement methodology to the COAM section of the code. And requiring that a first-time applicant deliver a survey.
Fives changing the language on religious.
Place of worship.
So, again, a little bit more than just a hundred yards and door-to-door, there's some other things in there. I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on what we're moving forward with, so...
So what else is it that you, you wanna make sure, cause...
Oh, that, that's fine, I just wanted to make, there's a lot of different discussions, I wanted to make sure.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I understood where we're moving forward, and also... Yeah, I do wanna see the final language, and then, I, I would say, just if I may briefly, to, I would love to see our businesses who do participate in COAM, um, move towards other revenue sources. Again, there's, there's plenty of opportunities, I know it's highly lucrative, um, but again, it's a community that's at risk in so many ways. You know, we don't have power to regulate it, there's, you know, different opinions on whether or not we should, even if we did, um, but it is something that I would love to see less of, um, for our community, thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I say something?
Sure.
Um, as a, as a new American, I, I understand, and I know family members who actually have been, you know, have, who've lost their homes because of this. However, the thing is, this is a state, the state program, and we cannot really control what happens within the state. And the cap county does not regulate it whatsoever. So anybody in our residence can just walk outside the city limit and do whatever they wanna do, the same thing. So all we're doing is, if we don't do that, we're just gonna hurt the small businesses within our city limit. And, I mean, uh, it's, I see it the same way with alcohol, I mean, I'm no big fan of alcohol, but it is part of our society, and it is part of the law, this is legal product. And, but, I agree with you, we need to have robust education in terms of, we, the city need to utilize education, um, uh, and work with the schools to actually educate folks that the impacts, the, the, the economic and social impacts of overall gambling in general, not just video games, but overall gambling in general.
Okay, Councilwoman Bell.
I think before we make generalized, uh, statements, an assumption that we make sure that we get the data, because as the only licensed clinical social worker up here that has dealt with people that have addictive behavior, similar to those that gamble, I can tell you one thing for sure. The same thing with alcohol applies to gambling. There's a stigma associated with you going to that store in your community and actually playing some of those slot machines and even other, um, machines for gambling purposes, cause you don't want the people in your community to know that you even have this addictive behavior, and it's almost like an illness. So I would be mindful to not generalize and say, hey, this is affecting our community. I would love to see the stats and the data of folks from our community that are actually utilizing it, but I, I can bet you a lot of resources. But there's a small percentage of the people that actually live in Clarkson that are actually utilizing the COAM machine. We've had this discussion about COAMS for quite some time now, regulations and oversight, and I think that as a city, we're taking that step to ensuring that they're complying by ordinance that we have, and making sure that we also have, um, code enforcement that's there, and making sure that they're in compliance to the regulations that we have in our charter. So I just want us to lean on that piece, but also be mindful that there's a small likelihood that the, the folks that are most vulnerable that are in our city are likely, there's a very small chance that they're likely utilizing those system and tools as it likes to gambling in our city.
Yeah, and I, I agree that we don't have a number, so we have to be careful when we, we say that, and especially, um, dealing with our population. So I think from looking at all avenues, this is a way that we're allowing our businesses to have consistency, cause the bottom line is, we're just trying to make sure we get this consistency. So I appreciate, uh, people making sure that we have a consistent number and a process by which we, uh, make sure that we tell them that they are in compliance or not in compliance. So with that, is this something that we're gonna have as consent, or we're gonna have this?
Consent, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, look at that. Okay, all right, so next, we have to discuss this. Oh, I did ask the public, okay. So, did you hear what we said? We're gonna put this on consent agenda.
Which means?
Which means...
It'll pass.
So, so...
You don't have to say.
You don't have to say a word, you don't have to say a word.
You can only mess it up.
Don't... Okay, or, but does the public wanna speak?
But let him speak.
Yes, just... Huh, you wanna speak? You want, you wanna speak, you wanna speak, wanna speak? Okay.
Okay, go ahead and speak.
Okay.
Good evening to everyone.
Yes.
Thank you for making this consent tool for our small businesses. We appreciate for everything.
Say your name.
Kenny Patel.
Kenny Patel, Mr. Patel, go ahead.
So like, I like to thank you, everyone, because like, this is like a small businesses who running only the grocery is helping us to deliver a bit generated money to feed family and everything, and thank you so much for everyone.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patel. Okay, do we, who, who else did we have signed up?
Hi.
Okay, so...
My name is Hi. Um, I wanna read out what he wrote down, like, he's my uncle, just translating, like, what he wanna say, so...
Can you give his name?
His name is Rafik.
Okay, so this is the letter that he gave us, so we have a copy of the letter.
Yeah, but, um, the thing that he wrote down here are different, I think. Is it the same thing?
It's the same letter, we have, we have this letter.
So do I still need to read it out?
We have received it.
No, we received the letter, so...
Okay.
So we, we have your letter.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you, all right, thank you, thank you. Anyone else? We had anyone else signed up? Do we have anyone else signed up online? Mr. Rashid?
No one else has signed up online.
Huh?
There's no one else signed up online.
There's no one else? Who's Mr. Rashid?
Rafik.
Rafik, oh, okay, we're good, okay, okay, all right, so with that, this will go on consent. And so we will now move to item N, which is to discuss the status and appointments to the city council task force. As you remember from the last council meeting, we split the standing advisory committees, and then we were left with the task force. I know that Councilman Perkins did some review of that, and I will allow him to go ahead and start the discussion for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so in our last council meeting, as we were looking through appointments to the various standing advisory committees, um, and, uh, looking at some of the resolutions that formed some of our, our task forces, councils, and, and committees outside of the standing advisory committees, um, it, uh, came to my attention that we have a number of these task forces that have never, uh, fully formed. They have not filled their appointments, they don't have the, the number of people on there. Others only had one designated council member liaison, you know, we, uh, appointed two, uh, to, to some of those, and, uh, really, there's only one, maybe two, that have, have actually been, been continually active within the community. And, uh, just to clarify two on the agenda items, so we have standing advisory committees, we have five of those. That's one, uh, resolution, um, that, uh, you know, you have two council members on those, it's for the general public, and then additional members. And then we have, uh, three task forces, a, a youth advisory council, and then two additional committees, um, in addition to those five. So this is not related to the standing advisory committees, that's its own entity. This is related to the other six task forces, councils, and committees, um, that do not make up those five. Um, so what I wanted to, uh, bring... Um, so what I wanted to uh bring up for discussion, my, my recommendation probably is that we determine which ones of these we need to dissolve. And the ones that we aren't, you know, and say, hey, look, we, we want these to continue. Um, if they need appointments, my understanding is there's some task forces that have been active that need us to renew appointments that we put that um uh maybe not on this uh, the, our upcoming council meeting agenda, but certainly into the next cycle to give those uh committees and task forces time to get uh any information that they need. Um, but I do want us to review uh each of those six to determine, you know, what, what path we want to take with them. This doesn't mean that it's permanent. Doesn't mean we can't renew a task force. Um, but I really think we as a council need to consider the criteria we use to determine um uh whether or not a task force is necessary or whether or not it's accomplished through one of our standing advisory committees. Um, again, all of these committees and task forces and councils have relevance to issues faced by us and the public we serve. Um, but their charters may need to be updated. Their membership may need to be filled or the need may have been met by another initiative. So thank you for allowing me that introduction. I'll hand it back over.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Perkins. Councilman Yasu?
I, I think um I do agree that um especially some of the active committee, um task forces get reappointed, um including the early learning task force. Um, however, uh like some of them, I don't think we need to dissolve them because they are not even m, they haven't even activated yet. Like the youth advisory council, it's still, it has not been fi, I mean, the seats are not filled. We have not appointed anybody there except for t, me and the Councilmember Bell. So um maybe we should uh see if we have applicants. I know my own child has applied. Um, so I know if there are more applicants that we need to see.
Okay. Um, okay.
And I totally agree. We're post pandemic. So I think that twenty twenty four should be the revamping phase. Um, if that, you know, we need to look at, we, we see our names. Um, so we need to get.
We're dissolving ourselves potentially.
Get on the ball. We had things going on and we were all a little afraid. And me and Ms. were not going to interrupt the seniors during COVID. Or, you know, so we, 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 we're on our stuff. And I'll get with somebody about, well, I think we should give twenty twenty four a try.
Yeah, and I, and.
Because YT and Awet had some movement on the youth advisory. I mean, we were interviewing and it, it was really going well.
Yeah.
But.
Could, could I present some maybe criteria for us to consider uh as we look through each of these? Uh, I could.
Well, okay, so let, let, let me, let me make sure. Okay, sorry. I'm sorry. Councilman Perkins?
Uh, so, so my.
Criteria, yes.
So cri, criteria in terms of whether or not, so true, some of these hasn't been staffed.
Mm-hmm.
Some of them have had deadlines that already expired in the original resolution. And so the resolution, in my opinion, needs to be updated to reflect that deadline.
Yeah.
And so um, you know, so we have these listed. I, I believe on our city website or at one point they were. Um, and so again, from a communication standpoint, from an allocation of resources, from a, is this actually a thing we can refer things to or be expecting report, a report from? Um, I guess our question should be, you know, well, do, do we want to, do, do we want to reevaluate these and, and update those dates? Um, do we need to reevaluate the whole resolution? What do we do with it?
Right.
Cause again, this has gone through a cycle where it keeps coming back on the agenda to make appointments. Uh, if, unless I missed something, or their youth advisory council, for example, does not have council appointments on it. Um, and so these are the, the kinds of things that I wanna bring up. Our police task force had a deadline to, I believe, submit a report to council in March of twenty twenty one.
Right.
Um, we don't have any appointments to that task force. And so, um, while I agree it, and, and so I was careful to say, I don't think these, you know, this applies to every group. Um, you, you know, I think some of these groups could be absorbed into standing advisory committees at some point. You know, we could take another look at that. I think that's a conversation for, for later down the road. But I do think it, it would be a good idea for us to look at these in depth. Um, real briefly, if I may, Madam Mayor, just the sort of five que, or four questions I think we could ask. One is, are there any just deadlines or dates in the resolutions themselves that formed these committees? There's a deadline that passed two years ago, then, then I would argue that the committee is dead already or the task force is dead already.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the second, are there appointments that are, you know, have, have they been filled? Are they vacant? Um, do we have anyone, you know, who, as Councilman Yasu uh mentioned, ha, have, you know, submitted an application? That's just been sitting in a file somewhere? Um, if we have a, a, a committee that has not been filled, well, what's our strategy to get those positions filled? You know, we, we can let this kinda sit and just kinda continue to roll around without actually doing anything. Or we can say, you know what? Let's put a deadline on this.
Okay.
Um, the fifth is activity and actions. If we have a council that they're meeting, you know, that they have deadlines, you know, they, they have their appointments, but they haven't really been producing anything, you know? Um, then that would be another question. It's like, well, are they fulfilling their, their purpose? You know, is it just something where we're dealing with scope creep, where we're trying to do too much? You know, instead of focusing on a few quality initiatives as a community? And then the fifth is, are they still relevant to community needs? And I'll mention the preventative health task force is this one. Um, and I've spoken with um at least one of the other um appointees to this task force. There's another entity right now. It's a coalition of additional uh health organizations. It's a number of different organizations with the Clarkson Health Equity Coalition. It's fulfilling, yeah, the purpose of what this task force is religionally created to fill. And so again, do we want to say as a city, we want to engage and support that? Or do we need a separate task force that may just be duplicating efforts? And so my argument would be, I, I don't think we need two of those. Um, and so it would make sense to go ahead, let's, let's close it down. Let's celebrate it, you know, as Marie Kondo says. Let's thank it for its service, you know? Um, but, but ask ourselves, is it still sparking joy? Um, but th- those are the criteria that I would, the questions I, I would pose that we, we use to filter our decision tonight.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And, and so let's, let's do a simple one. Cause again, the preventative one, uh, that's really now they have that coalition and they are, they're down the street on Church Street with place already. And really, we just need to have someone to be the liaison um from the city. We could actually have someone from the city um to attend those meetings that they have to keep us updated with that one. So.
And, and Madam Mayor, by the way.
Yeah.
Can I say something? And we also do have a presented, preventative research center as well where me and you will sit on, on the board.
On the board. So yeah, and that's part of the coalition. So we're, we're good. So we can take that one off. Um, and I know that the youth, um, what, so I just, I, I got one piece. Can I, can I be added to the youth council? Cause I got some stuff, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Is that, that okay?
You're gonna need to apply. And when you apply, then we'll move forward with your application. I just.
So it's okay, okay.
I do have a point here.
Mm-hmm.
Can somebody clarify why we call these task force and half of them don't have task force in the title? Or is the also the recommendation that whoever's already on here as a liaison, just go back and look through the resolution? And address to some of the points that Mark has made that I think are valid. Cause I don't know what this police community task force is.
So that was one to look at the policies. And so it hit along the time of um when we had COVID.
Okay, but, but I think that can be dissolved into public safety and legal.
Well, no, cause they, it reports up to it. And so they're already people as part of it.
Can I respond? You say you don't, but have you done anything on this committee?
I just got appointed in January.
But has anybody done anything on this committee? Task force, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, it's the same thing with all the other stuff too.
But it was created during COVID is what the mayor just mentioned. So don't, don't say that you don't know because nothing has happened on it, is what I'm saying.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bell. As many of these other committees, as we've said, are in the same situation.
Okay, but she made the rebuttal. I just rebutted.
So I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you so much. So to your point, Councilwoman Bell, um, in the council uh with these task force, uh again, we talked to um Roberta and she made a point of she already has her committee members. So she's locked and ready to go with this one. Um, and then just, I would ask that Councilman Carol and, and Yasu and myself just kinda look at the requirements for it. Um, and then make sure that anything else in terms of having liaisons, if we need to change the numbers, if we do need anything else. So let's task these things that uh Councilman Pers, Perkins brought to us to make sure that we review each one of those.
One at a time.
Um, with the respective committee uh liaisons to that. Is that fair? Okay.
Are you saying we go ahead and dissolve the preventative health task force?
Uh, is that fine for the, the council?
We're not deciding this next week. We're just gonna do it in the next few weeks or months, I guess.
Be ready for the next council meeting, but we won't, yeah, we won't do anything in terms of it, like having something by next week.
Yes.
Is that fine with everyone? So Councilman, Councilman Yasu, restate what you just said.
I just said, we're not doing any action, either dissolving or anything by next Tuesday. Oh, this is as couns, I mean thankfully he brought it. We just need to talk to each respective liaison and in the coming months either dissolve some of them, maybe next month, one of them could be dissolved. But we just gonna take action one at a time on these things in the coming weeks and months.
We're gonna have each one who's designated as the liaison to review his or her committees, responsibilities, or task force. Cause some are committees and some are task force um to see if we're doing everything in terms of appointments, responsibilities, duties. Um, the only one in terms of what the council has said is more the preventative health task force to remove that because we have an uh coalition that's already doing the work. So we don't have duplication. And to have with the permission of the, um, and direction of the interim city manager to designate someone to work with that group, with the health coalition. Because we can't direct staff. Okay?
That works.
That works? Yes.
So are we saying we do not have a set timeframe for this? We are each going to look into our specific task force committee, council, whatever.
Yes.
And come back.
No, we do have, I want us, if, if it's fine for the council by the next council, council work session, that uh everyone has gone and reviewed, made sure in terms of everything so that we can turn around and vote for the next meeting. Is that, is that fine for everyone?
And in terms of, um, in terms of the prevented, preventive health task force, are we okay with going ahead and dissolving that at this current meeting? Okay, so that's my recommendation. Yeah, is that we dissolve that one and then have a clear deadline, which I appreciate it being the next cycle for these others.
Right.
Okay.
Got it. Just wanna make sure.
I just wanna be added to the health, the youth one. Add, you, add me to the youth. Okay, yes. Okay. Is that, is that everything in terms of discussion? Do we have anyone else signed up for this one? Do we have anybody want, the audience, anyone wanna say anything? If not?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.